Prior to the start of this meeting, the board went into executive session to conduct business in regards to a proposed litigation matters related to employment history and potential discipline of specific district employees and to receive legal advice. No action was taken. Executive session is concluded. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, Happy Valentine's Day.
Yes.
Everyone in the red gets a star today. If you're red for Valentine's. All right, before we start today, do we have any students here? I'd like to start honoring our students at the beginning of our meeting. Do we have any students here who wants to stand up and be acknowledged? Okay, so sometimes they're doing things for projects. With that said, Madam Superintendent. And so, oh, we have, okay, can I get a shout out to what school you belong to? What is that?
Seventeen.
Seventeen in the house?
We got a little, little one here.
Seventeen? Sixty-four in the house?
Sixty-nine.
Sixty-nine?
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine in the house? Eighty-nine in the house. All right.
We got a little, little.
He's in Chris K, fifty-four.
Fifty-four in the house. Okay, thank you. I was blessed before the meeting with some cards for Valentine's Day. And I will not put them on the spot, but I'm in love with those children. They thought enough of me to make me some Valentine's Day cards in honor of someone who I'm missing this year on Valentine's Day. So it caught me and I'm still trying to pull myself together. But life goes on. Okay, Miss Madam Superintendent, can I turn this over to you because I need a minute?
Of course. I'll move forward with sharing more good news, some board recognition. We have two members, one board member, honorable board member, and one of our chiefs who have been named this year as 2024 Honorables at the upcoming Utopian Euphoric LLC, the fourteenth annual Women Who Walk in the Footsteps of Greatness Gala. And that is our very own Honorable Dr. Kathy Evans Brown. And our Chief of Human Resources, Tammy Holly McGee. Celebration will take place on Saturday, March sixteenth, 2024. And it is a celebration of remarkable women who shape our world. Their dedication to public education is leaving an indelible mark on society. Again, congratulations to these honorable women on this significant honor. Congratulations. I would also like to ask Dr. Morell to come up and to discuss a little bit about the Lunar New Year. And while she's coming up, I'll just say a little bit. This year ushers in the Year of the Dragon. And the date of Lunar New Year differs every year, but this year it started last Saturday on February tenth. This is a holiday that symbolizes a hopeful transition from the cold winter, although we've been a little lucky this winter, from the cold winter to the season of renewal. Dr. Morell?
Thank you. It is my荣幸to give brief history and purpose of the Lunar New Year. Thank you, Madam Superintendent, for having me this evening. And good evening, honorable board members. It's so awesome to be here with you today. Happy Valentine's Day. So the Lunar New Year, also known as the Spring Festival, is a vibrant and joyous celebration that marks the arrival of spring and the beginning of a new year on the lunar solar calendar. It is a time for families to come together, honor their ancestors, and look forward to a fresh start. This annual that holds great cultural significance for billions of people around the world, particularly in China, South Korea, Vietnam, and other countries with a significant overseas Chinese population. The Lunar New Year is deeply rooted in the traditions and customs of various cultures. While the official dates of the festivities may differ, the underlying sentiment remains the same. The desire to reunite with loved ones and welcome good fortune in the coming year. During this time, families prepare for the celebration by thoroughly cleaning their homes, symbolizing the removal of any bad luck or negativity from the past year. And while the Lunar New Year is most famously associated with China, it is celebrated with equal enthusiasm in other parts of Asia and beyond. South Korea, for example, observes Lunar New Year as so lao and follows many of the same customs as your Chinese counterparts. Vietnamese communities celebrate with vibrant, vibrant parades, traditional music, and delicious treats. In Malaysia and Singapore, Lunar New Year is a public holiday celebrated with colorful street decorations and lion dance performances. And we've had those at the board, lion dance performances. And finally, in the United States and other countries with a significant Asian diaspora, Lunar New Year has become a multicultural celebration that brings together people from diverse backgrounds. Festivities often include dragon and lion dances, martial arts demonstrations, cultural performances, and a wide array of traditional foods. It is a time for communities to come together, appreciate different cultures, and celebrate the spirit of unity and renewal that Lunar New Year embodies. Many of our valued families in the Buffalo Public Schools celebrate Lunar New Year. And we are proud that we are on the precipice to recognize it as an official holiday in the Buffalo Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The bells are ringing because it's the Lunar holiday. They ring off every fifteen minutes. They've been ringing today. It is time for our speakers. At this time, the board welcomes speakers who have been signed up to speak at tonight's meeting. Please be reminded that all speakers remarks must be limited to three minutes or less. We ask that speakers be mindful that this is a business meeting, open to the public, and televised locally. Attendees and viewers, including persons from throughout Western New York, including children, are viewing this meeting. The board asks that speakers conduct themselves professionally and that their comments remain civil and courteous, bearing in mind that they will be heard by people of all ages. This is an opportunity for Buffalo's residents to address the Buffalo Board of Education about issues that serve the public interest and district's mission. And the board asks that speakers demonstrate appropriate decorum. With that said, we are here to welcome our BTF President, Mr. Rich Nygros. Would you please come forward? Thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent, President, Board Carpet and Cotton, at large in the District Board members and guests. My name is Rich Nygros. I'm the BTF President. And I'm here today to speak on behalf of the thirty-eight owners teachers whom I represent about the proposed budget and its impact on our students. First, I want to say we understand that the budget's a proposed budget. Nothing is a horse is set in stone because the state budget hasn't released. It's not going to occur for one and a half or so hopefully. But you've done the fiscally responsible thing and you projected needs and you come up with a budget based on it. What I'm concerned about are some of the numbers that I've seen. I'll start off with the reported budget shortfall of ninety million dollars as the Esther and Art Funds sunsets at the end of this year. We knew it was a three-year deal. That ninety million dollars as reported in an article by the Buffalo News. And I trust the information on that article, I'm a reporter, does a pretty good job. But of the ninety million dollars, sixty million of that is savings were going to be realized through cutting of one-off non-recurring expenses. And perhaps some of this has changed, but this is a few of the numbers that I had. And I look forward to corrections if I'm mistaken. The remaining thirty million dollars will come from essentially the reduction in force of positions. It's about three hundred. And that would, Mr. Just made it a point to say we're not looking to lay off, but we'll look at realize those reductions through attrition from retirement, by imposing somewhat of a hiring freeze, by not filling certain vacant positions. The district reports this looming deficit, but the numbers that I've received and some that have come from the S T three report seem to tell a different story. And that's where my concern is. Over the last ten years, the district has overestimated its expenditures. And at the end of the conclusion of the year, has ended with a substantial surplus. Now again, the goal, of course, is not to complete your surpluses, but certainly it's got a healthy surplus. And Buffalo's not bound by that four percent cap that a lot of the smaller districts may be. So you're able to retain a higher amount of money in there. But over the ten years, the last ten years, that surplus has been in range from one hundred and ninety-one million upwards to two hundred and sixty-six billion pre-COVID. Most recently, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, it was three hundred and seventy-five million. And those are substantial numbers. My concern is, my concern is this. One of your times, Dr. Williams, is equity for all in all that we do. And I believe that you have, or that have stood by that commitment. And of my concern with these cuts, I've got a few concerns. One, I think that if these proposed cuts are realized, then we do a disservice to our kids. We do this service to our kids in a number of ways. If you reduce the staff, first, if we're looking at rightsizing classes and using the international language of class size maximums. The maximum, maximum is, you're in the red zone. It's a threshold, but you're a critical mass at that point. And so while that is a maximum, it's not an ideal number. So as we rise closer to the maximum, you present, you inject more challenges into the classroom and the job of the teacher and those support staff. And as a consequence of that, our goals are increasing graduation rates, increasing passing rates, reduction in suspensions, things that we all want. Tend to suffer as a consequence. I believe the opposite is going to occur. There have been specific numbers in the school-based budget as far as what positions wouldn't be filled. And literacy coaches, things in pretty much every single coaching position, a lot of those have been zeroed out. And again, it's projected budget. And everybody seems to be in a panic about that. That's one of my jobs. It's to kind of quell the panic and explain to folks this, and this is not a definitive thing yet. But another thing that I hear from members is the need for transparency. So we have concrete numbers for these school-based budgets in the buildings. And we see teacher aid positions and instructional positions. We see administrative positions, and we see where those reductions are going to take place. But one of the things that members have said is we don't know how equitable is this impact? What is the realization of reduction of force if it's to be borne by everybody? Is it borne also by central office administration? This number, I haven't got a definitive, I haven't got a verified number on this. A source of mine has said, and I usually don't like to speak on this, but the reason why I bring it up is because I think it's relevant, that central office administration or district administration has increased by about thirty-five over the last two years, from two hundred and fifty or so to about two eighty-five. If that is the case, then what members are saying is we're going to be hurting the classroom with these cuts if this is what happens. Our job is going to be incredibly more challenging with fewer support staff, social emotional support staff. And post-COVID has been a real game changer in terms of what the expectations are of those folks. So transparency, I guess, is one of the biggest issues with regard to that. My main, my main purpose, I understand, again, the budget's not set in concrete, but I think that there is a need for a little bit more transparency. We've talked with members to let them know how the process works in the building. We met with Ebony Bullock and her team as far as SBMT goes and how the budget works as far as voting on that. You have your SBMT team and you come to a consensus, and I live with, I can live with it kind of consensus. But I don't know that that's happening in all the schools. I think sometimes these budgets in the buildings are getting strong-armed through. But again, I know Ebony's team's going to look at that and vet that stuff. My main concern, though, I guess, bringing this to you, is I want to press upon you the detriment that that's going to have in the classroom, both for our students, the increase in workload on the teachers, and all of those goals and things that you've all been working so hard to try to achieve, the learning gap control, and the need for transparency as far as how is this going to hit all of us? It's not about, what about them or the students, but, okay, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. President Nygros, I'll address you prior to some of the other speakers coming up. I do agree with you in sharing that it is a proposed budget and that this is a process. It's not, you know, a one and done. And I met yesterday with all of our elementary principals. I went to the meeting to meet with them, and I met today with all of our high school principals because I do want them to feel and to know from my level that transparency is important and their voice in how this happens is important. You know, there are formulas, of course, that we have to look at, and we have to look at, we have to be realistic that when student numbers decrease, yes, we do have to look at that. But equity will be a part of this process. And with the transparency piece, I began two weeks ago sending out bi-weekly newsletters to keep everybody updated on where we are with things. We have a finance and ops committee meeting. And, you know, our chief financial officer goes over everything extremely detailed and in a very transparent manner. I believe it's open to the public. I did an interview with Channel Seven News. So, you know, I don't want folks to feel that there's this small core group of folks that are making decisions that, you know, we're not being transparent because we really are all working together to be transparent. And so my purpose in going to the meetings with the principals was to hear their voice and to hear from them, you know, what is it in their school buildings that they absolutely would like to, you know, I know they want to keep everything, but we can't. We can't continue to operate like we don't have this ninety million dollar cliff that we are experiencing. We won't be able to sustain ourselves for a couple of years. And the reason that we, you know, we're lucky enough to have that surplus, you know, it allowed us to give teachers a very deserving contract, you know. Some of that goes for. allowed us to give teachers a very deserving contract, you know, some of that goes for that and they deserve it. But if we spend everything, then when things come up, you know, then we're not in a situation or we're not prepared to be able to do those things. So this is a delicate process. You know, we are looking at retirements, we are looking at the freeze on hiring, we are looking at vacancies, we know that we can't just all vacant, you know, there may be some mandated positions that are vacant right now that will have to be acted upon. But I just want to reiterate that this is a process. I'm working very closely with our budget department and our associates of school leadership. I now have our building leaders as a part of the process and I'm sending out information to everyone so the teachers also know. You're right about saying that, you know, it's post-pandemic and we can't continue to behave like things were pre-pandemic. Things have changed and, you know, we do understand that. So I just, you know, I'll reiterate that we are being very transparent. We value all of our staff and, you know, we will get through it, but it's going to be a challenge.
I do know, and I know this is a back and forth, I do, I do want to mention I, upon ratifying all the contracts, I mean, who knows to getting that done, there were a lot of contracts worth of 10 bargaining.
We have 11.
11. To get that done is no small feat. I do know one of the questions that comes before, that the board asks though, is is this something that we can afford? Having done all the contracts and obviously the BTF is the biggest one of them all, but the question that was asked is can we afford this? That would be outside of the scope of Esther Funds and Art Funds. What do we have now in our conference, but we know that sunsets in three years, so beyond this, can we afford it? And I felt the need to just kind of respond to that because I do, the teachers who make a decent salary now, well-deserved along, or do, but we've come to that and with your help and our former president has achieved that. But again, I don't want, I know when we hear deficit, we're looking at the $90 million shortfall in those funds going, and we still have a third of a billion dollars if that number's accurate in 2022, 23. And that doesn't mean I want to, that we should, I think we should fit into it and defeat it, that would be irresponsible. But I feel that it is something that just should be noted. If my numbers are off, then certainly I know I want to get corrected on it. I don't know.
Thank you so much. Just for the record, board members, I would like to deviate from the agenda at this point. I would like to bring our chief financial officer up so that we can at least have him explain some things and so that we can make sure that this reference is clear. Is anyone opposed to that? Okay, thank you. Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Burns, can you briefly just answer his question, please?
The district budget is a very complex, a very complex organization, a very complex budget. It's, I don't want to go kick for damn efficient meat and work for some of these issues, but the wrong thing regarding a $90 million shortfall. That's just a loss of funding. I don't want a belaborate teacher contract. Any, that will add $48 million.
Can you talk to us, please?
The new teacher contract will add $48 million in salaries and benefits next year, above and beyond what they were this year. That's an example of the complexity of that budget and how various issues, contracts, charter school tuitions, all have to be factored into balancing the budget next year. So just, I just want to focus on this one point. It's more than just a $90 million loss of funding. There are costs involved, $48 million for a teacher contract with the benefits, $16 million for charter school tuitions, and a variety of other factors that actually increase our costs while we're losing $90 million in funding. So, second point I'd like to make is transparency. Our budget process is extremely transparent. It's extremely transparent and it's bottom-up, starts at the schools and then we just finished our various department trading. The departments entered their non-staff budget requests. So it's a bottom-up budget. And regarding making sure that cuts are equitable, I just met with the superintendent, we stayed with him yesterday, to review the proposed central office cuts that have already been offered up by various department and campus owners. But they're proposing, being put on a list for the superintendent to review at the appropriate point of the budget process. So it's transparent. The central office is a big part of this mix for the cuts. The budget, the complexity of balancing the budget next year is much greater than just cutting $90 million.
Thank you. I just felt since we needed to just straighten that part out so we can move on, I appreciate the BTS president coming forward, sharing his concerns. Certainly, it was not, we are listening and we are, as a board, we are very concerned. Superintendent, thank you for addressing that. And Chief Financial Officer, I'm sure we will see him again next month. I don't think he's just going to let this go, but we will work with that. I would also encourage Mr. Nyger, if he has questions or concerns, that he reach out to you and you will kindly, I'm sure, make available the Chief Financial Officer to assure him of what's going on. I think it's important that we keep the channels of communication open at this point. Okay, thank you for that. Next, on our list, our speaker's list, we have Veronica Love, substitute teacher, the love of being a substitute teacher. Veronica Love, are you in the house tonight? No? Okay, thank you. Malina Fisher, parent, policy and procedures, and it is Malina's children who brought cards to me today that touched my heart. And I appreciate that. And it meant a lot to me because those young men were so articulate a couple of months ago when they spoke, and this is our best of Buffalo Public Schools when we have our children come forward and represent. And they have a mother who is a tireless advocate for children, so I'm sure you have something to say today.
I love that they think that this is part of our monthly meetings. Good evening. I'm coming before you this evening regarding the district transportation policy and procedures in relation to loss behavior management policy. I have found in my own personal dealings and hearing from parents throughout the district who have faced similar issues, this policy needs to be looked at and updated. There is no due process procedure in the current policy. Transportation supervisors at schools are suspending children off of buses with no evidence. They are not pulling bus footage and they are not discussing the conduct with the children to build restorative behaviors. In my instance, it was found that the transportation supervisor, Lydia T. Wright, added allegations of misconduct that were not included in the original driver's report. This is horrifying on many levels. Where is the accountability for this gross misconduct? I, as a parent who tried to address this situation when receiving a call that my child would be suspended off the bus, was personally told that she is not required to pull bus footage and can suspend children as she sees fit. I then asked for a meeting with admin so I could address the behavior allegation and was told by her that admin is not required to meet with parents and would not be meeting with me. How are we as parents supposed to teach our children to trust and respect authority when they are treated in this manner? An issue so many children, especially minority children, have faced in systemic equality issues. How are we supposed to help break the cycle when supervisors such as this are able to arbitrarily hand out punishment without due diligence being done? Due to the demographic of our district and the amount of poverty we have faced, the majority of our students are only able to attend our schools by getting there on a school bus. The district needs to realize when they are suspending these children off school buses is essentially an out-of-school suspension. I would love to see the statistics of children that actually attend school during bus suspensions and when they do attend, are they tardy or being checked out early during, due to their parent's schedule, impeding on valuable education time that these children cannot lose. So I would ask that the district review their behavior management policy as it will be 15 years old this July, ensuring that includes a due diligence procedure for transportation supervisors at all schools before suspending. To include bus footage must be pulled and reviewed by administration in coordination with their supervisors. Conduct reports must only reflect what is included in the actual driver report, with that report being attached on the conduct report that is being sent home to parents and caregivers to help prevent additional allegations and create transparency for everyone. I understand behaviors must be addressed and the safety of our children is our primary concern. And the updated policy is needed where parents can have the ability to address these issues with schools. A policy where parents and schools can together help address the behaviors of children so we can create a better, safe environment for all. As you consider updating this policy, I would look towards the schools that currently have good procedures in place, as Mrs. Schneider and Mr. Garcia at School 89, and Mrs. Cachini, Miss Berry, and Miss Frazier at School 17, as they are leading examples on how child management behavior should be handled. I hope and look forward to an updated policy that will protect our children in the district and I, as a parent, would be more than happy to help you in assistance and endeavor.
Thank you. Speakers, I need to warn you about using employees' names because employees have a right of protection and we have to be very careful about that. Thankfully, this was a good scenario that was shared, but I need to remind you of that, that we do have to monitor and protect the names of employees, only because it's the right thing to do. And that's how it is. Next, we have Jasmine Keith, parent, safety problems at school, number 59. Is Jasmine Keith in here? No? All right. Vinnie Rondinelli, parent, facilities at school, 32. Thank you. Please come up.
We're bored. Thank you for your time. So I called in Monday. I called to, you know, to tell myself to speak here regarding the school pool that hasn't been open since we got back last, last month, 2020, the playground that had been broken for about two years now. I got on the schedule Tuesday morning. I was at a parent group meeting at the school this morning. This morning I was told the pool's open and when I came back to pick my kid up from school, the playground stashed. So, you know, thanks for everything.
That's got to be a first.
I kind of ran out of things to say. There's something I would like to talk about regarding Bennett Park Montessori as a Montessori school. Some of the, it's kind of felt that the Montessori program is just, is like viewed as kind of a nuisance, kind of a bit of a problem. The Montessori method is unique and it's not really, it's not really what's going on in other schools. And that's okay and that's fine. So, you know, us at the school are just hoping that the school, that the district can kind of view it as a gem. It is, people do move here. There's some parents that have moved from other parts of, you know, where they're from, for a public Montessori option. It's very, it's very desired in the community. So we just hope that anytime district staff are in the school, that they embrace the Montessori method and not view it as a problem. Also, I'm glad that you guys here, some of the things that the, that staff are saying at the school is that a union contract makes it difficult to, or impossible to mandate Montessori training for teachers and, and requires them not to, they don't have to adhere to the Montessori method if they are a teacher at Montessori school, which is a little crazy to me. It sounds like, you know, if I was like a music teacher at, at, performing arts and I didn't know what a scale was or how to play trumpet, at least two drums. So that's it. I owe you all my time.
Thank you very much. Superintendent will respond at the end of these, list of speakers. I'm sorry if I don't say your name right, but Ramaha Kachindi, student wellness, please come forward. I received a request from their parent, their adult mentor, that the children are a little nervous about speaking before the board and she has asked to stand with them. But they have nothing to fear here because there's nothing but love for these children at this board. So. Where is Rini? Rema? Rahima? So. And so are you trying, do you want to speak?
Yeah, I'm fine. I was just wondering if there's any microphone or I just wanted to talk about.
Okay, because, I'm not sure what you have to say, but do you feel intimidated, young lady? Are you intimidated by us at all? Well, you're welcome to speak. Come forward. We love you. Let's give her a round of applause, people. Let them know that we love these babies. Okay?
Yeah, that's fine, but quickly, I just want to say our students are here also going to pass out some healthy snacks to everyone. I'm not sure if that's okay. It is just kind of like part of the work that we do during love in a way of like giving to others. They are going to come around and whoever wants.
Okay, let's do this. Let's put some order to this. When you stop with the food right now, what we will do is, you have, what, three speakers? Four speakers? The last one is you. You're on here.
Jessica's on here. It should be about five or four.
Okay, so Jessica, we're going to move you up and you're going to go after Kadija and after that you can distribute your snacks, okay?
Thank you.
There's order in the universe. Thank you. Okay. So, young lady, please address us and let us know what's on your mind. You are beautiful and you are welcome.
Nice to see you everyone. I'm sorry. My name is Rahima Kachindi and I'm in Buffalo Homes Schools as a junior. I'm a black mom, so I'm maybe my parents, but a community health worker. And I just wanted to speak a little bit about my educational experience and like the equal opportunities that connect with you all. So, throughout my academic experience, I've seen a lot. First off, being Black in America and assimilating into American culture as I'm African. Also, learning to navigate my own social and emotional health all posed their own issues. As I navigate what seemingly the most important times of my life, this is what I want to see for the kids that experience school after me. I want students to be included in conversations that concern them. I want to see a system that proactively works with parents and students to resolve conflict. And I want to see an educational environment that is desirable and comfortable for all parties engaged, from board president to pre-grad students. But what does that mean? In essence, it means actively addressing the needs of not only the students and the parents and teachers, but also the environment that they're placed in. This means connecting the staff to resources that help them do their jobs effectively because, let's be honest, if we're even, we are out here. Okay, so not that that's been, not that that's been said, I just want to switch the gears and start talking and talk about love, given that it's such a lovely day. I wanted to speak on some amazing milestones in progress as a district that we've made and that I would love to see more of. So here are a few things. Thank you for making plans for my future and for my future, my younger siblings that address our social and emotional needs. Thank you for making use of, to embrace organizations such as Connect that help students and families thrive even when all odds are against them. Thank you for making sure that I get teachers like Miss Barrett that provide a safe outlet and share and resolve, the safe outlet to share and resolve my day's concerns. Thank you for the 5x25 that sets goals to, for progress to be started and impact to be felt. Even though I didn't write this down, I thought back through. Even though I didn't write this down, I thought about it around here. And thank you so much for including CLRI because almost every event that I've had with CLRI has been so like motivating. Even like down to like, maybe like simple stuff, like just hang out at like Saturday Academy. I feel so like encouraged to like connect more with like Black culture in America as well as talk to my peers. And then I have more to talk about with the peers and community health worker organization. And then I want to give a special shout out to Ms. Ruth Connor and the VPS who to reach the front to ensure that we have good food. And work tirelessly to integrate foods that I really enjoy but otherwise wouldn't try like from this route. At the end of the day, everyone has some things that they would change about everything. But there are also many amazing things happening. All we have to do is look up and talk to them.
Which class is she from? Hachette is in the house. Okay, thank you. Beautiful. Next, we are welcoming today Fahad Adan. Did I say it right? If I didn't, come up and correct me and teach me how. And what school are you from, young man?
I'm a graduate of MSD High School.
Okay, and did I say your name right? Say it.
My name is Fahad Adan.
Fahad Adan. Okay, thank you.
I'm here to speak about the challenges I faced during my school year. During my senior year, I experienced the closing of bathrooms in our school. This impacted us students, you know. With like our time management and stuff, it affected like our class times and stuff because we had to wait at like lines. While we're in the bathroom. And there was issues. Many of my peers also, my peers are also sharing that this issue causes long waiting lines for bathrooms. And for me, the first floor bathroom was like, the only ones that were open in our school, and our school is three stories. So it was, it was a very big issue for us. And additionally, I would like to point other concerns like the bathroom cleanliness. Personally, I also personally don't believe that taking a bathroom away from kids should be a form of punishment, which they treated as. Because access to school bathrooms is very crucial for promoting students' overall well-being and academic success. Clean facilities also contribute to a healthy environment, reducing the risk of illness and promoting good hygiene practices. Attic restroom pursuits, facilities also support students' comfort and living. And last, I'd ask for you guys to please support the new food commissary project. The group of youth that I got a chance to visit the current building, as we all may know, it is like falling apart. And all Buffalo, Buffalo School District students deserve to have access to fresh, local food for our students. Thank you.
Dahaya? Khosaiya? Yeah, he said that. He said that. How do you say your first name? He's getting a cheer already.
Am I ready to?
Yes, sir, please.
Hello, my name is Jai Hussein, and today I would like to address the issue around unsanitary bathrooms in my schools. And other schools that my peers go to. I would also like to address all these issues shakes my high school's experience. During my four years of high school, of my high school experience, the bathroom has never stayed clean. Unsanitary spaces have a negative effect on students' learning ability because it makes it hard for students to focus on learning. When they are in need of a restroom, will hold it in because restrooms are not usable. I'm concerned that high schoolers might suffer from a variety of consequences for filthy restrooms. Including not, including but not limited to disruptions to their mental health, emotional and physical health. As we all may know, holding in your bodily fluids may lead to physical health concerns like urinary infections and more. The lavatory environment has a significant impact on how students perceive school in general. It is best for the whole school community that students perceive school in a positive light rather than a negative one. Additionally, the neglect of restroom cleanliness can perpetuate a culture of disrespect for shared spaces and communal responsibility. It sends a message that the well-being and comfort of students are not a priority, showing a sense of neglect and indifference among students. This lack of regard for hygiene can contribute to an overall decline in the school's culture and can break down in the sense of the community. If the bathrooms aren't clean, students can become used to environments like that, which may motivate uncleanliness throughout the entire school building. Finally, I would like to ask the Buffalo Department of Education to continue supporting the new food commissary project. As we may all know, food is one of the top necessities to live and as students, we deserve to have fresh and healthy food locally so we may perform at an excelling rate of academic success. No one can do well and have a good day if they're hungry. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Kadija Khosai. Was he some relationship to you, Kadija?
What was that?
Is that young man some relation to you?
He's my yoga brother.
Okay, beautiful.
Me or him? Hachette, he's also, yeah, hachette student. Alright. Good evening. My name is Kadija Hussein. I am a parent of a pre-K DPO student and also an older sister to a Buffalo School of High Schooler. I want to briefly just speak about the importance of giving opportunities to our students, including those who struggle more than some of their peers. Because I sense a feeling that there's a lot of like opportunity given to the, you know, high achieving students. They get to go out, you know, even like this past school year, I believe, some students eventually went to Mexico and stuff. And just kind of like, how can we also like give opportunities to our students who are struggling? And make sure that like we are reaching their, giving them the needs, what they need. And just helping them with like, because a lot of times our students are struggling with their mental health and stuff and just giving them the necessary resources and stuff. And giving them those options who their other peers gave. Today, I'm here about with fifteen students, our connect students, and we just got back from giving away healthy snacks. It's still back on the plaza. And we're actually having different conversations with them too. While they wait for like the train to come or the bus, whatever form of transportation they're waiting on. Our district does have some amazing, some young people. I just want to put it out there. Examples are my students who are here with us tonight. And it's just a matter of giving our students opportunities like these to be their best self. I was one of them about eight years ago. I think sometimes our elders forget that kids are going to be kids and they're going to make mistakes. We all make mistakes at some point in life and it's a healthy part of growing. That's how we learn. We sometimes get caught up on bad behaviors and don't give the students who are struggling opportunities to be like what, show the best part of them and what they got to offer pretty much. While we were in downtown speaking to students, some students have shared the things that they would like to see in their, in their schools as healthier food. We want to put this up, put stress management classes, better food, not get detentions and stuff. Give teachers, so I wanted to add that to give teachers a range because they are working very hard at some kind of their job. What they're given pay doesn't like, it proves us the way they should be given pay, so just acknowledge that our teachers are doing a great job. And then last, I just want to give a shout out to Ms. Ruth Connor and her food service team for working as hard to make sure that our children and students are fed. And along with that, also asking the board and community and community leaders to please join me in supporting the new food commissary project. Because what is an important thing, like our students already said, food is a huge component of our overall well-being. Healthy and fresh food does improve academic performances, which is what we need in our district. Thank you.
Next would be Jessica Bauer Walker, parent and fearless leader.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Happy Valentine's Day. So I'm in the spirit of the day, just wanted to show appreciation to everybody who loves our children. And we have a lot of different people in different capacities and we love our children in lots of different ways. So we are here tonight as parents. This is deeply important to us because these are our kids. I live and work with teenagers, so this is my reality every day. We hear a lot of narrative about things that our children are doing wrong or bad and, you know, those root causes of those behaviors. So we are being the change we want to see. We are here with fifteen teenagers tonight. Many of them were downtown today at Fountain Plaza. We've heard that there's some flights that have been broken out. So what we did was the issues that our youth have been working on, we have been working on designing a research project and identifying top issues that are important to them. So they've identified transportation and being able to get to and from school, school food, and you've heard them mention that tonight. School safety, so how safe does it feel in school, physical violence, bullying, issues like that. Mental health and school discipline, so suspensions, detentions, things like that. So we are down today piloting this survey to make sure that the stuff we're talking about is resonating with other youths too. So we asked them, like, out of those five issues, what would you say is most important? And there was a pretty even spread, just in our pilot survey today, and we're down there talking about a hundred kids. Handing out healthy snacks, which we are here to help hand out healthy snacks too. So these are the things that we want to do, and a lot of these kids have been in a lot of trouble. Because there's been misunderstandings, there's been unmet needs. And so we look for those kids, we see their potential, and we help them to tap into that potential. Oftentimes, they don't have an adult that they can trust. They've had a lot of bad experiences. And so we work with them through that. We allow them to make mistakes. And we, we help them to both take accountability and we love them and we care for them. And we have great results doing that, right? It's, it's rough out here. It's rough out here being a teenager. And so we're here to support them. We ask for you to support them, and we know lots of people do. From the food service folks, to the security guards, to administrators, a lot of people are. So thank you for that. We also asked some of the youth, what, what assumptions do adults have that you feel are incorrect? And a lot of them said things like, they think we're all bad. They think we're ghetto. They think we don't care about school. There's a lot of misunderstanding between youth and adults. And so we had good success today and didn't see a single incident being down at Fountain Plaza from two thirty-two. So we're gonna keep doing this because it worked today. I'm not saying that, that students don't act up sometimes because they're teenagers and there's a lot of kids downtown and other places. But let's love them. Let's not exclude them. We have a major problem where we have to move from a punitive to a restorative system. So please join us. It is a culture change. It is a system change. But these children here, these youth here, are an example of coming out and being that change that they want to see. So thank you for listening. Thank you for holding space for us tonight. Thank you, youth, for being here. Thank you to our parent leaders and our parent congress.
Thank you, Jessica Bauer Walker. And we are happy for you to share our healthy treats with us at this point, if you would be kind enough. And I want to say, because I had been on record to say that I expect children, our students, to come and represent. And today, they showed us who they are, and I want to give them a round of applause. Thank you so much. Thank you. Everyone, including.
More student speaker?
I don't have them.
Right, and she's on.
Oh, she, oh, that's not on wellness. So yeah, she, once you do your wellness piece, then I'm gonna bring her up.
Okay, so we, we are passing around some, some healthy chips and some turmeric. So if anybody would like a healthy snack, our students may help us. We'll be, we'll be passing it over. Turmeric is important to us too, as you can hear from our students.
So this is what Valentine's Day looks like from Jessica Bauer, and thank you.
Happy Valentine's.
Nah, I'm helping her. We're gonna allow a few more minutes, and then we're going to bring up the last three speakers.
Youth, can you, can you go up sharing with our board members? Let's do this quickly so they can keep their meeting moving. Can you get a couple more youth up here? Get a bag of chips and turmeric to all our board members and cabinet members up front.
Are we good? Let's not give the Let's give the Connect Community Health Work a another round of applause and thank them for this. Next, we have Karaya.
Alright, all of you, can you plug that down again? We got Karaya back there.
Karaya Kula, Restorative Circle.
Yeah, Karaya Kula.
Kuluk? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Karaya Kula. I am a Buffalo Home Schools student. Today, I want to discuss my experience throughout my career. I believe that some students fall Some students fall into the cracks and not get checked up on because they do not seek assistance. Students in school, difficult situations at home, and sometimes just in general. That can lead to students not wanting to do their work and sometimes act out, acting out in school. A school system that helps improve student behavior will be promoting and implementing more restorative circles in our schools. Restorative circles are spaces where you can be safe and vulnerable. Safe and vulnerable, and safe spaces are created. Restorative circles give students an opportunity to have difficult conversations in a safe space and also help them restore confidence between students, teachers and other school staff. The only experience I've had with a restorative circle being done in my school was once after the May fourteenth tough series. We'd never had initial conversations after that. During restorative circles, we can start off with a check-in and state the purpose of the circle. We then set expectations, expectations and values and ask questions around what harm has been done. How we can solve the harm and how it was impacted on both parties. This would help students feel more comfortable in the classroom and give them more room to be vulnerable and seek help from each other. I hope that this is something that can be implemented in every school in my district and be more consistent about it and not something that happens once and we just move on. Thank you.
Thank you. What school are you?
I go to Bennett High School.
Okay, thank you so much for sharing that. That's what I'm talking about. Student voices in the house. I love it. Next, we have Sabir Azim, parent, highlight, principal and staff at school number fifty-four. Thank you, Sabir. And who do we have with you today?
This is Fahad, my youngest. I have three children. So thank you, Christine Boardman, superintendent president, for allowing me this space to just highlight very briefly school fifty-four and the leadership there. So I'll give you a little bit of background. Right now, I am getting my doctorate in education, that's the same one, so double studying. Thank you. So, I, you know, I'm very observant and cognizant of the school's culture, the school climate. And I just have to say, my son being so happy there, skipping literally to school, a smile on his face when he's walking out. The teachers never look exhausted at the end of the day, very bright. Just all around, every day, just happy. So it speaks to the leadership of the school. Um, so it speaks to the leadership of the school for children. And also, the principal within the first week knew my son's name, so that meant a lot to me. So the school's like very good, so. I just, I just want to highlight her leadership, and just the staff there, they're just like amazing. I'm very, very happy, like beyond asking for my son's support.
I'm sure that was a love letter for, uh, that principal in that building, yes, ma'am. Thank you. Our final speaker for this evening is no stranger to us, Mr. Esfidel, adult bullying students at certain schools.
DJ, before the clock starts, I would ask for a little leeway, because I had to give up my three minutes last month because of the storm. So I asked for just a little leeway. And I would also like to mention that the policy that you spoke on at the end of this meeting, um, one student did mention a teacher, and no one reprimanded her for that. And I'd like to state that I, I'm gonna read something off my phone, and then I would start it, if that's okay. Um, the First Amendment guarantees me the right to free expression, free association, which means I have, the government cannot tell me what I'm allowed to say. I cannot threaten anybody, I cannot, um, cause a riot or anything, but I can, and I did look into this, I sort of thought Dr. Cash was gone, and Dr. Cash did this to us, tried to silence us when we spoke up for our families. So I'm going to use the principal's name, and I will talk about the school, and I'm hoping that you allow me to speak, because the alternative will be a press conference Friday morning outside of Harvey Austin.
So can I say this, Mr. Esfidel, before you speak? Out of respect to the employee who is not here, who can defend himself, to have a conversation or to, um, screw things out there, I would ask you this. If it was you, how would you feel if you were in that position, if your name was sent out across the airwaves? How would you feel if it was your family member? How would you feel that if you, uh, have done something that someone has not approved, that you are not given a chance to address it with your, uh, your, your, your boss or whatever, before it becomes a public, uh, before it becomes a public, uh, event? And that, and I'm asking you because if we are talking about leadership, one of the things we want to focus in on in moving forward is how, when there's a situation with an employee, how do we make sure that it is positively addressed without being personal about it? And that's what happens when the name goes across the airwaves, the person has no opportunity to, to, uh, to have any rebuttal, and you get a chance, and it almost looks like, whether we understand it or not, that, and I hate to use this term, but it almost, it's not fair, because I'm not gonna use that term, it's just not fair. And, and out of trying to have a decorum, and trying to treat people with the type of level of respect that you would want in return, is why we say that, okay? Because guess what? Each employee in this district has a boss, someone who they report to. And if their boss has not had a chance to address it, why are we, why is it, first of all, coming to the board in, in anything other than a matter to be corrected and not to point the finger and accuse? And that's why we do, we say what we say. It's not a matter of trying to take your First Amendment of rights away at all. What we're trying to do is, if there's an issue that needs to be addressed, that the proper people are here that can address it, but in fairness to the employee, the employee doesn't have the same soapbox that you have, because there's two sides to every story, and we don't know what that other side is. So I, I, I'd just like for you to temper your remarks today and consider what it would be like if it was your family, or somebody in your family who was being put on the spot, or just would respectfully ask that, that's all.
So I will, I will agree, if someone will agree to set up a meeting with me and the person that I'm not allowed to speak about, so that I can just.
It's already done, when you come here, that's how it's handled.
And I, and I will say that, um, he has the same opportunity as me to speak publicly at, at this meeting, but I will respect, I will respect, um, your ask, and, and the way that you presented, I respect that.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
So I'm gonna say, uh, and I, I'm hoping I get the courtesy of the time, I get a call, I get many calls every week with concerns from parents. Um, of course, I'd like to just have everybody think about the family sanctanacy and the mass shooting today. There's a mass shooting out at the parade, at least one that had ten shot, so everybody, um, please think about the family. I got a call, um, from a mom that's just concerning a classroom in this school, where , um, the aide is physically yelling at the student, a special needs student, at the top of his or her, um, voice. I confirm this with a, an employee who works in that building, that everybody hears the aide screaming, uh, more than one time a week, or whatever, you know? Uh, I got enough, I did a same call, I got notified that assistant principal was standing in the hall with the student, yelling at the student that they would call the police if he didn't behave. Um, I, I hope that that never happens again. I attempted to reach the principal two times via phone calls, and the only time he responded is when I said, if you don't call me, I'll just go to the superintendent. My intentions was to never go to the superintendent for this problem, because she's got more important things to do, uh, than solve one kid's problem that we should be able to solve as adults. We had a great conversation, he agreed that the aide, he agreed that the aide would never be in the classroom with the student again, while the aide is back in the class with the kid. The student's struggling doing his homework, they understand that he's doing his best, but the aide has taken away, the aide has got more power than the teacher, it sounds like, has taken away his Valentine's Day celebration because he didn't do his homework. Wait, yeah, it, it's bad. This week, mom called crying because of that. Um, yesterday, we got a phone call, she got a text message from the assistant principal saying, you need to immediately come get your son, he wouldn't, um, he wouldn't get on the bus to go home. Well, he was on the bus, and they gave a note to the bus aide that he was being suspended, and the child asked for it, and it became a problem. The child now has a bruise on his foot, we don't know what happened, we're gonna look at the tape. Um, David Hills made one phone call to Joe and the transportation, and the bus showed up in fifteen minutes and the kid went home. Mom couldn't be there for forty-five minutes, but they were, they were continuously stressing her, and when I talked to the assistant principal and said, I talked to David Hills, the policy is, you call for another bus, that's the first step. So David, thank you, you, you accomplished that. Today, we get, um, a notice that the kid's having a long-term suspension. So here's where the problem is. The child just had an IEP meeting, gets an aide, the district, the special ed department, did not fulfill the aide for the student, the student now, which needs this aide to help control himself, is now looking at a long-term suspension out of school because he, he just can't manage himself. We have a meeting set up Friday to hopefully get him set up for agency school, and now everybody's scared that, like, my opinion is they want him out. And I'm worried if that's the truth, that the, he all of a sudden got suspended, and they didn't announce the suspension when they were telling mom to pick up, pick up the child. So that's as nice as I can be without going any farther, so I'm gonna stop there. I'd like to address two other things. The last thing will be super positive. The second thing, I'd like to thank our DPC members that showed up tonight to speak. I appreciate them, I appreciate the students, um, Jessica Bauer's group, everybody, um. We, we've had our means, and he's died for two years, and I've never been treated by a security staff like that in my life. The, the young man that was there was a bully, and he, I, he said, I took the things out of my pocket like everything, held them up, he goes, you gotta put them on table. I said, where's the basket? He wasn't gonna go for it. Finally, um, the assistant principal was Tom, he got a basket, and we got through that. But the women who attended the meeting, the second security, which we don't need two security guards, we never have, we usually have one, but there's basketball game, so there were three there, they put their hands in women's purses. That's, that's not a policy, right? That's not a law, right? A mother, a grandmother came with a cane, and he said she has to put her cane down so I can wander. And, and, and Joanna said, the daughter, she can't stand on it, or she can lean against the wall. I'm not here to do anything but other say, they need better training, and we would like a regular woman back that treats us with respect. We want the same respect that we give them, that we earned. I mean, it was offensive the way that they treated us, and I just would wonder how you guys would feel if you came to our meeting and you basically got harassed coming in. We, we appreciate the safety, we respect the safety, but we also respect courtesy back to us. Now, the positive thing. Ninety sets of cornhole tables have been delivered to the district. It's important to get them to the schools so we can get the next order, hopefully, in the near future, so we can, uh, get the students in high school playing cornhole, so they can attend the first-ever District Parent Coaching Council Cornhole Tournament at the Parents Summit on June first. And, uh, we're gonna send them out, and hopefully they'll get there soon. Please, when you talk to your high school principals, come, it's important to get the team, the kids involved. The ultimate goal is to make it a unified sport, because our children with disabilities only get two unified sports, so we want to have, um, a third one, and hopefully a fourth one and a fifth one someday. But we have to start somewhere, and, uh, help me support it, and we can show the concept works, and I will push it through Section Six one way or another, so that our children have a fair opportunity. Thank you.
Esfidel, we appreciate you. The superintendent, please, would you respond to this speaker? Sure. Um, I'll start with Ms. Malina Fisher, and, um, I want to start by thanking you for offering your help, you know, with the committee that will take a look at, as you shared, a policy that may be antiquated, and it may be time for us to put together a committee and look at the bus behavior management policy, and to update that. So we're gonna take you up on that, because we are transporting upwards of twenty-nine thousand children every day, so it's important, you know, that that policy be relevant for what we're experiencing now. And I heard you give a shout out to Principal Schneider, um, at school sixty-nine, and someone else that you voluntarily offered to possibly.
School seventeen.
School seventeen, okay. All right. All right, but thank you for that, and we will certainly take you up on that, um, as we move forward with creating that kind of committee. Mr. Rondanelli, I don't know who you know, but we sure want to, you know, be introduced to whoever you know who got things happening that quickly to get that pool opened and to get a playground set up. I'm very happy that's, ideally, we don't want you to have to, you know, threaten to come before the board in order for things like that to happen, but ultimately, I am happy that the children at school thirty-two will now have access to the pool and to the playground, and we certainly all value the Montessori program, because it's the only public school Montessori program that I'm aware of in Western New York. So we certainly do value that, and want to get training for all of our staff who work in that school, so that they do understand that the Montessori way is unique, and it is different, and, uh, they need to be trained to know and understand exactly what that process entails. So thank you for coming tonight. Um, and then we had, I believe, some students, Rahima, my goodness, my goodness, we've got some, some very, um, powerful young people in our district, and each of you that spoke tonight and are here tonight make me proud. You've got bright futures ahead of you, your voices are very powerful, and your voices have the possibility for changing policies. So thank you for coming tonight and talking about some of the ways that you've had to learn to navigate social emotional wellness, and then talking about love, and especially, I want to thank you for showing such appreciation for the work that this board does, and the work of C.L.R.I. and Dr. Morell, and the impact that that work has had, not only on you, but also on others. And I just want to say, you know, I just tried Brussels sprouts myself within the last three years, so they're new to me too, and they are tasty. Juad Addin, um, a graduate, graduate, I love that, a graduate of MST High School. And I heard you say that you experienced closings of bathrooms, and that concerns me. Um, I don't believe that's still happening, but we will check into that, because as you shared, um, the use of, or the ability to access restrooms should not be used as a disciplinary mechanism. And so we will check with our principal over at that school, who I know is a very caring, very caring principal, Principal Womack. She runs a tight ship, but she cares about the children in that building, and cleanliness is always important to me in all of our schools. And, um, you, and along with many of your peers, asked that this board support the food commissary, um, project, and that's the only reason that it's moving forward, is because the board is supporting that project. So know that, know that. Yah, Yahya, or Yah, I want to say it right, Hussein. All right, Yahya. So, boy, greatness runs in the family. Um, you talked about how unsanitary bathrooms make it difficult to focus on learning, and that really is a caption that, that should be copywritten, because I agree with that completely, completely. Um, it sends a message, you shared, that students are not a priority. The only reason that this school district exists, and right now, we're involved in a project with our Council of Great City Schools, we only exist, only, to support you all. Without children, without students, there's no need for a school district. So you are always the priority, and we need to hear your voices to be reminded of that. So thank you for coming tonight and for showing, sharing that. Khadija, always learn a little bit, you know, each time you come up. Thank you for sending your pre-care to us, that's number one. I know that, you know, for parents, your children are your most precious jewels, and so we appreciate that. And you talked about providing opportunities for students, and in our strategic plan, goal number one talks about increasing opportunities for children, closing opportunity gaps. That's really what that plan is all about. So I agree with you when you say you've got amazing groups of young people, you brought some here tonight, we got one sitting here to my right, who is, uh, on our board. But, I mean, when I heard you and Jessica Bauer Walker talking about going to Fountain Plaza this evening, it's cold, it's cold, you all have your own lives, you got your own families, and you went out to Fountain Plaza this evening, that really talks about walking the walk, not just talking the talk, and we appreciate that. And I know that the children are. So Jessica, when you talk about how, you know, it's important for all of us to love on our children, even in their most difficult moments, that's when they need it the most, and we know that. And, um, the survey, I will be interested to see.
Sure.
How that pans out, I'm interested. And today, you kind of sectioned out four areas that kept coming up repeatedly, transportation, food, safety, and suspensions. And so I'll be interested to hear in those four tenant areas, as you continue to go back, what some of the students' suggestions are, because they probably have some answers that can help guide us on where we need to be. So I am very encouraged, and I'm very excited, you know, as I've always shared with you, you know, there are certain expertises that parents bring to the table and that our community brings to the table. And I think today, what you all discussed and what we see here is an example of the expertise that you bring to the table. And I think today, what you all discussed and what we see here is an example of the expertise that you bring to the table. So thank you for that. You know, you brought healthy snacks. It's a little difficult on Valentine's Day to be healthy, but you always bring healthy snacks almost every time I see you. So, you know, I got it, I got it. Kariah Kulu, you talked about how some students fall between the cracks. And I just want you to know that I believe in restorative practices. It's difficult work, it is not easy. I think some people think it's, you know, bubble gum and unicorns and it's not. It's difficult work, it's evidence-based work. And I agree with you because I think it allows students to get to know their teachers a little differently. And I think it allows teachers some insight into what students are experiencing also. So we support it, you know, restorative practices work. I know that Dr. Morrell's department does a lot of work with it, as well as Dr. Brown's department. We've got a whole team of folks that are trained to go out and to lead teachers. Because it is difficult, because sometimes students open up and share things that if you're not trained to receive, it can make it really challenging. So we have to make sure that our staff are all trained the way that they need to be trained to receive and to help and to support. Sabria, boy, oh, boy, oh, boy, you've got a young president or something in the making over there. I've been hearing he's been cheering at the right times and he's got that, he's got that little phone. I mean, our kids know how to do things on the phone that he's probably doing something that none of us could even figure out how to do. And, you know, I want to say, I always appreciate when we have parents that come in and they speak. Because you speak from the heart, you don't have to do it. And I'm sure you'd rather be at home enjoying time with your son. But you made it a point to come tonight to talk about how your son feels walking into School 54. And it just swelled my heart to hear that because that's what I want for every single one of our students. From our three Y program up to even adult education. I want them to walk in feeling confident, happy, and feeling loved and cared about. And when you shared that that's exactly how Principal McNeil leads her school and how all of the teachers, you said, they don't seem tired. You know, they come every day refreshed and ready to teach. I love it. Thank you for that and I know she'll appreciate it because I'll let her know that she had a parent that came. We know that parents come out sometimes and share things that are not good. So, you know, when you come out and you share that, I know that it's heartfelt. Thank you for taking the time to come out tonight and share that. President Spidey, you shared some concerning things that happened at one of our schools. And, you know, I think you know, myself and most of the cabinet pretty well now to know that that's not behavior that we condone, that we encourage for any staff to be, you know, yelling at children or, you know, intimidating children at all. And so, you know, it's something that I'd like to ask our chief academic officer and her team to look into, as well as the ASL from that school to look into and see how we can. You've requested a meeting, you've requested a meeting. In the meeting, I know, you know, we want our adults respecting children, we want our leadership respecting leadership. So I know that the meeting will be positive. You've had many meetings with folks in our district and in our schools. But I'm asking for them to kind of convene a meeting so that we can understand what happened. Because it sounded like you had an opportunity to speak with the principal, you came to some resolution. And then for whatever the reason, and I don't know what, but I'm sure that that principal would be able to talk through what happened and try to get things back on the right track for that child. I'm excited about the corn, cornhole. Is that what they're called? I'm excited about it, I'm excited. And I'm excited because the kids are going to be excited. And I know that Dr. Krestis pushed, made sure that that happened. And that's the kind of cabinet that we have. We care about our children and we hear when parents come up. So I don't feel, you know, any way about you coming up and passionately addressing and advocating for our children. I really don't, I never do, I never do. So I'm getting to that, I'm getting to that.
Please.
Chief Lark is our chief of security. I take notes, I do, I take notes, so I, you know. And I'm troubled by that. I'm troubled when I hear that someone that's elderly that had a cane was told to just lean up against the wall. There's always opportunities for growth and for training. And it sounds like that might be a situation where there's an opportunity for some training that's needed. So that, you know, we know that we have our evolved scanners and, you know, overall, most people, and you've been in and out of our schools all year and I've not heard any complaints. So it wasn't a matter of going through the scanner or anything like that. It sounds like it was a human concern that happened and that we can fix. So I will have Chief Lark reach out and see what we have to do so that she can hear a little more in detail about what happened from you. And then we'll work on getting that fixed. That's all.
Okay, I have a board member that would like to say something, board member Jennifer.
Yes, so it's been talked about that we've been working with Council of Great City Schools on our governance and doing trainings. And part of the positive student outcomes that we're looking to try and, you know, at least get a handle on, I believe is being handled in a whole nother way by these surveys and going downtown to Fountain Plaza where we know that's such an issue. And I encourage, because I don't want to upset the governance fees. But I encourage that since we do have a relationship with Connect and CHW that we get some of those surveys and find a way for these students to present them to administration in our schools. And hopefully to board members, however we go about it. But I feel like the surveys are necessary. If you had such a good result, there should be more than just you all floating around in different areas where it might be dangerous. Maybe we can nip some of that in the bud within the school relationships that we currently have. So I just want to put that out there publicly as a suggestion. And I'll retell to you personally because I really love to see the surveys. Congratulations, guys, that is a fantastic effort and thank you for doing that.
Impressed, thank you. Any other board member, any comment? I just want to conclude to say that I am very proud of our young people today. It means a lot that you took the time to prepare and came before this board. I hope this is the beginning of your public speaking career. Okay, you know, and I'm looking forward to hearing more from you. Know, young people, that we are going to get to the bottom of your concerns because your voices are important to us. And again, I want to thank you guys for blessing us with Valentine treats, healthy treats for the heart. Okay, thank you again, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Krestis?
Ness. And I want to say goodbye to my, to my guys. You know what, they're my, they're my sons now. They're mine, I love them. I'm going to share my cards with the board. They gave me sympathy cards for Valentine's Day and it just touched my heart in a big way. Thank you so much.
We've been working on that for like. So we. Would just work out that like six months.
All right, may I have order, please? It's time to hear our student representative update. We are glad to have her here. And I want to share something or talk with you about something once you finish your update about what the board is considering and to get a feedback from you on it, okay?
Okay, so we had another in-person meeting last week, maybe, I think. And it was with some domestic violence group at the summit in the Buffalo Museum. We had multiple speakers, Caitlin Durgesen, Ava Thomas, and Don McPherson. I don't know if I said that correctly. And we talked about the issue of domestic violence and how a lot of cases go unnoticed and unheard of because of silence. And Caitlin and Ava Thompsons and Durgesen had talked about their experiences being in a domestic violence type of situation, whether it be their romantic interest or their childhood growing up. To go further into it, Don McPherson had discussed how we shouldn't be silent on those type of matters. We should try to have more matters, have those matters be discussed upon more and be brought to the light and have more people discuss it, speak about it. He mainly started to discuss men bringing up their voices and how he wants more men to start involving ourselves in the conversation of domestic violence. And then we also had a couple of inner high, little active talks, debates about like what our civic project is going to be. One of our biggest options that I feel like a lot of us kind of like, where's our answer? Oh, well, I don't mind doing it, I don't mind doing it. Would be going to like an elderly home and doing some type of donations or like hanging out with the elderly, whether it be like making little Easter baskets or reading to them or spending time with them or even just helping them during the food or stuff like that. But it still works, still works, we're still working on it. We're getting there. So that's it for the inner high. I also got invited to the Urban Forum. Again, I think I was off it last week, it was the same day actually. And I had to leave early to go to the domestic violence summit, but it was really nice.
Lady, how did you get to, how did you get from one side to the other?
Okay, so my grandma took me to the Urban Forum because it was near her house. Because it was at Performing Arts. And then I had to go Uber to get to the Buffalo Museum.
Did you, didn't you have a part in the program? Didn't you participate? What did you do?
I led the pledge of allegiance.
She led the pledge of allegiance.
I led the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. You weren't able to stay because you had another event to go to?
Yeah, it was at the same exact time.
Okay, all right. So with that said, I'm sorry, Mr. Hurd, your hand.
For like, if our service hours?
Yes.
Um, yeah, so the civic project does count for our service hours. We have to come in on Saturdays and stuff like that, we're still working on it. But we don't want to have our service project during like the school day, stuff like that. So it's kind of like us having to go to the elderly homes on those Saturdays or Sundays to help out with the elderly, which we consider in our group, like service.
Are you going to a facility or are you going to individual homes?
So because there's multiple schools, again, we're still thinking about it. I think we're going to like different homes and, you know, the elderly. But we still have to figure it out because we have to just like distribute the schools, the days that we're going to do it and then the ways we're going to actually mark up how we actually did or how we actually did something for the community.
Make sure you put us on the list too.
Since this is an inner high project, are we assisting at all in transportation? Like I feel like that's such a big piece of the time that they're going to spend together. And it's, I don't know if we can because it is.
Sounds like you're talking about going to individual homes instead of like everybody going to a nursing home.
Which is what we're still trying to figure out and discuss about. Because we don't know if we're going to split up for like two different schools in one nursing home and another two different schools and another nursing home. Or if it's going to be all together in multiple days that we're doing the project.
But I know Dr. Brown will work with. So may I ask a couple of questions? You currently hold a job, right? And on the day that you are here, you are not working, right? Okay, how many hours do you normally work doing your inner high work or your work associated with the board in a given week?
So for like inner high and then my Board of Education, maybe around like four or five hours, honestly. It's not too, too much. I do feel like I do work more than I actually do.
And so board members, one of the things that I'd like for us to consider doing is to consider a student, our student representative to receive a stipend. And I would like, if it's okay with legal, to have it co-authored by our student representative as well. This will give her her first chance in seeing something put together and then the board to stand by and support her. One of the, one of the things that she shared with me is that she uses an Uber sometime to get around. And she also is not working tonight because she's here, okay? And so ideally, I think I spoke to many of you about this. I would like for us to move forward for our next meeting to put forth a resolution. And I would like to make sure that she is reimbursed for the Ubers that she has taken out of her own pocket to come to this meeting and to do things for the district. And also provide her with a monthly stipend of some sort. And I thought we would put it together for a dollar amount, not to exceed. And if it should exceed that amount, it would come back. But one of the things she also shared with me is that she is in March going down to Albany to represent the district in the Big Five, Student Lobbying Day or meeting. I think they're meeting with, meeting with our legislators down there. And so what we do not want to have happen is a, for us to be a liability or to cost you any expenditures. We want to make sure that you're made whole. Have you thought anymore about what you're doing after you graduate this year?
Um, so I did want to go to nursing, I had just recently got a full rice scholarship. It's the Compton State. But I did want to go to North Carolina, that's where I want to go, my dream school's in North Carolina.
What's your dream school?
NCAT.
Okay, did you get the scholarship there or somewhere else? Not yet. Not yet.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Not yet. Okay, keep hope alive, keep hope alive. So with that said, I will start working with her on crafting it so she can see how the process works. And we will bounce it off of legal. We will pull it together this year. Board members, you can add your, your two bits in. And our next board meeting, we will move forward to make sure that we provide a stipend of some sort to our students and make sure that it is not a hardship for her. And so I just want to thank you guys for that. Do you have anything else you'd like to share? Okay, so I want to tell you one thing that we're doing and we're going to need your help with. We are having community meetings and one of the groups, subgroups that we have identified are students. And I like to make sure that you have, that you're with us that day to help us facilitate that and help us to develop what that should look like. How many other, we have already identified two groups, maybe you can come up with some other ones or whatever. We have the inner high group and I think we have student council. And if, you know, there's other things. But the ideal behind that is to find out the values. and the visions of our students so that we can help uh make sure that we're improving what we're doing here. Okay, thank you so much. And I want to thank your mother and grandparents and your family, your support system for supporting you throughout this. Okay, thank you. All right, let's give her a round of applause. Dr. Brown, I just asked if you can have um our Director of Guidance reach out to just talk through a little bit with Deja about her dream school and to see if say yes and back offer scholarships for that school and, you know, if there's anything we can do to write a recommendation letter or anything to support her. There are some scholarships out there and let's talk about that. Is it possible, Madam Superintendent, to get just a site on the on our webpage? Just listing the scholarships that are available, that that are available. I do know of one scholarship that was shared with me and I believe it's through UB uh or some women associated with UB or whatever. I'm not sure. You have to go to UB, but I think that so I'll share that one with you. It came across my desk the other day. But do you do you understand what I'm saying here? There's a lot of, maybe we can sign, maybe board members, if you know of things, we can just help build that site so our children can uh just bring it up on our website and just hit it, okay? All right, let's work on that for our students. Thank you, um Mr. Hammond in advance. All right, so without that, if all that's good?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move forward. May I have a motion to accept the previous board minutes? I see Cindy, I see Jennifer. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion to accept the consent agenda. Cindy, Kathy, all in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Okay, let's talk about the exception list. Mr. Hurd. Oh, I'm sorry. Did I skip you?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We got to get these student outcomes.
Wait a minute.
We got to.
Because I'm timing.
Got to get that in.
Wait a minute, my bad, because uh one of the things I want to do with this agenda, my bad, is to move the consent agenda up uh because I want the staff to be able to go home earlier. So you have to excuse me. I'm already ahead of myself. My apologies. Superintendent update, uh this is part of our work that we are doing with the Council of Great City Schools. We are moving toward um discussing outcomes, um student outcomes, at least uh.
Fifty percent.
Well, our goal is to get to fifty percent. But I want to give a shout out to our board members who have taken it upon themselves to take this class. Uh and before tonight is out, I want you to share a little bit about it because I think you probably right about now looking a little, yeah, look at all of you. Don't look at me like that. Look all good. At the end of the day, at the end of the day, this is a board meeting of the community. And we are going to let our uh students speak and we're going to also make sure that we um have things and we'll work on your fifty percent. It it we're a process, we're working process.
Yeah.
Okay, so Superintendent.
Yes.
Sorry about that.
Oh, no, no, that's okay. Um I'm going to ask um Laura Samoski Peters and Dr. Prophet Bullock to come up on our Office of Shared Accountability. And they're going to talk tonight about um the third goal that the board has charged myself and the district with, which stated that we um would do all possible to not see a decline in graduation rates. Now, I just want to say that, you know, graduation doesn't start in senior year. It really starts with preparation and pre-K. And so uh they're going to tell the story tonight about where our current seniors who are in the cohort of 2020, some some of how they got to where they are. And when we set that goal, what we said was that it would not decrease this year, June of 2024, from June of 2023. That was erroneous because in June of 2023, the graduation rate was not seventy-nine point one. That was in August. The graduation rate in June was seventy-five point seven percent. So I'll let them tell the story um and we may have to look at that. We may have to look at that and modify um what we said, but I'll turn things over.
So good evening, Dr. Williams. I stand for Ms. Jones. Um I am delighted to deliver this report. I am the proud mother of a 2023 graduate. She's doing excellent at Howard, the hard work of this district. And I stand here as a proud mother of a 2025 graduate of VPS. Um so um graduation rate is personal to me, personal to me. Uh along with me presenting this will be um my super duper, right hand now, my Assistant Superintendent, soon to be Dr. Laura Samoski Peters. Um my wonderful colleague, Charlene Watson. And the incomparable Dr. Brown from Student Support and her super duper, Assistant Superintendent, Ms. Tina Jones. And so we're going to break down the various pieces of what cohort 2020 is and what the graduation rate, um what our prediction of the graduation rate will be. Um we're going to take it slow and steady. As Dr. Williams has indicated, it's layered and multifaceted. So I believe Laura, you're starting us on.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Thank you, Superintendent, board members for having us tonight. Um who's on the next slide? So I wanted to start off tonight with the definition of of the 2020 cohort. So any student who entered grade nine at any point during the twenty 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 twenty-one school year is included in our graduation. So four years ago, when we were still in that COVID lockdown, any child who started school as a ninth grader, we have to count. There are only a couple of ways that students would leave our cohort. That would be if they uh exited to a different school and we knew that they went to a different school. We would be able to remove them from our cohort. Um but we get kids, right? So if a student started in Tonawanda during that school year, but then moved to Buffalo, they would join our cohort and leave Tonawanda's cohort. So it's a little bit different than just saying the twelfth graders, which we'll talk a little bit more about tonight. It's not just twelfth graders. It's any student who's in their fourth year of high school right now. They started during the twenty twenty-one school year. Okay, so those other students we're going to be talking about tonight. And just quickly, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Brown and Assistant Superintendent Jones to talk a little bit about the diet, the things that that cohort has experienced during their four years. Next slide, Adneer.
Thank you and good evening, everyone. So I just want to talk a little bit about cohort 2020 and the pandemic. And again, this is just to speak about the cohort in a lot of ways. We certainly cannot speak to the individual situation, but certainly cohort 2020, they had a journey. And as we know, we experienced a global pandemic in which the country, the world shut down. And our students weren't eighth grade when that happened in March of 2020. And they were immediately replaced, as well as all of the other students, in remote learning. So they didn't get a chance to experience in eighth grade as you're preparing. That's a very exciting year. You're preparing for Class Day, for your field trip, your graduation or moving up day ceremonies, and unfortunately, they were not part of that. They had to be in remote learning. We know that this was the first time we ever experienced this, so we were um building the ship as it was sailing. So there were a lot of people participating that time with computers, IT, worked very hard, Wi-Fi, making sure parents had that set up. So there was a huge transition during that time. And then twenty 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 twenty-one school year, the students were in ninth grade. So again, we know there's a huge transition from eighth grade to ninth grade. We see it a lot in our data because they're moving from that middle school component, which most of our schools are in pre-tate eighth study, so it's an elementary school building. And then you're moving into high school, which is a huge transition. So they never enter into the brick and mortar. Some of the students in, not until February, February of 2021, that was under the former Superintendent's leadership, since he brought in students and things in the course. It started with about a hundred students um who had the most leads and it was pre-tate two and then all of the seniors. So again, this cohort 2020, they were once again in remote learning during that first semester of the 2020 twenty-one school year. And then as the phase and approach occurred between February and June, a lot of the students re-rolled. So it wasn't until twenty-one twenty-two school year when all of the students were back into back in school building. And so at this time, that 2020 cohort, they were, that was the first time that they entered into high school in their uh second year of their tenth grade year. And so we know during this time with remote learning, there was a lot going on during that time. There was a lot going on socially and emotionally during that time. We tried to offer, we offered a lot of supports virtually, um virtual counseling. But again, it's never the same because also even during remote learning, they were not required to turn on their um their cameras. So it was very difficult for the teachers to, you know, really communicate them, communicate with them and really engage them. And state and local COVID isolations and quarantine mandates, it was really bad during that time. I don't know if you remember. I'm sure we all remember. It was a very challenging time. And the building leaders had a lot to go through during that time where they were obviously managing their buildings with the safety. Safety always comes first, but they're also instructional leaders. But they were now interfaced with trying to balance social distancing. And even in the hybrid model back in twenty 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 twenty-one, that that was a time where they were on the computer for remote learning for about three days. The other three days, the other days, they were in person, but in very small groups. So when everyone came back, it was still social distancing. And during that time, with the um with the mandates for COVID, a lot of the students, if you were near someone who had COVID, you had to go into quarantine for ten days and you had symptoms fourteen days. So students were in and out of school during that time. And so we know, not just with, this is just not unique to Buffalo, but also nationwide. There is definitely, unfortunately, a few back in the learning loss. And so we're really trying to close that. And during that time, we were getting a lot of supports, but it impacted not only students, but school personnel. So many of their teachers were out as well with COVID or they were or had to be um quarantined. And so the reason why we're sharing this, like, not to make excuses at all, but to just to share with you their journey and to explain how this is the one cohort that had a that it had a huge impact on their life. And now we turn it over to Assistant Superintendent.
Good evening. So understanding this narrative, when students enter high school, um they get to meet their high school counselor for the first time and go over their graduation requirements, what it is that they're striving to do after high school.
Next slide, Adneer.
Thank you. An understanding um what they want to do post-secondary and what are they going to make their best four years of high school look like. The students didn't have the opportunity to actually meet face-to-face with their counselors. However, the school counselors still uh met with the students virtually to go over the New York State High School graduation requirements and explain to them that they need twenty-two credit hours to graduate from high school, which encompasses four credit units, credit unit units, I'm sorry, of English, four of social studies, three science, three math, one oral language. You can take a visual art, music, dance, theater for one credit union and unit and two physical education, half credit for health and three and a half electives for um the elective units. So with that being said, our students had an understanding of when they come into high school, um this is what they needed to graduate. Our counselors ensured that our students were registered for their appropriate courses in ninth, tenth, and eleventh grade. And again, they didn't come back into the building until the later part of their sophomore year, but they still made sure that they were registered for the correct classes.
Next slide, Adneer.
And so understanding that as they're registered for the courses and they're doing remote instruction before they come in, um New York State had a COVID exemption. And students during 2020 cohort received exemptions for their New York State regulations, such as the global U.S. history, algebra, living environment, um and so forth. So to get a better understanding of what that looked like, June of 2020 and August of 2020, students were eligible for COVID exemption. And 2021, they were eligible for that for January, June, and August. Along with that, for Ja- uh 2022, of January, students were eligible. But then it started shifting in June of 22, where students were only eligible for the COVID exemption for U.S. history. And that continued that path for August of 22 and this past current January of 22, U.S. history only for the exemption. So the students in this cohort should have a number of exemptions as long as they passed a course um and some of those regional level courses. And then students um are also eligible for what's called a student, um a special appeal. They can earn a New York State High School diploma if they scored anywhere between now above a fifty, but they may not have achieved that sixty-five, they can uh do a special appeal. And it's important to know and understand that those special appeals are only eligible for the five dates that we see here, which is June 2022, August of 2022, January, June, and this past August of 2023. So that means the students for 2024, for January, that fulfilled is no longer eligible and for June. And that helps summarize the graduation requirements and exemptions that students were eligible for during this COVID period. Thank you.
Next slide, Adneer. We want to add a little more context. So sometimes in this slide here breaks down the number of credits that a child should have earned by the end of the grades posted in there for high school. Sometimes we think that if our child is in high school for three years, that automatically makes them a junior. If you see on this line, in order to be in eleventh grade, you should have earned eleven to sixteen credit hours, right? So let's start from the beginning, ninth grade. By the end of ninth grade, a child should have earned up to five credit hours. By the end of tenth grade, a child should have earned five point five to ten and a half credit hours. By the end of your eleventh grade year, you should have earned eleven to sixteen credit hours. And then by the end of your twelfth grade year, you should have earned sixteen and a half or more credit hours, allowing you to graduate on time, fully accredited. Now, we have a way of sort of looking at students to see if they are falling behind or not. And Laura is going to talk about some of our early warning systems to determine that. Adneer, next slide. Okay, so um if you remember, we said that this group of students, the cohort, excuse me, I've been coughed offline as soon as I did the call. They were in eighth grade when we locked down in March of 2020. So we don't have any eighth grade scores for them. We do, however, have seventh grade scores for them from 2019. So I got water. So when you look at the screen here, we still have, we currently have two thousand two hundred ninety-four students in the cohort. Of those students, eight hundred thirty-seven of them, we don't have a seventh grade score for. So they may have been in a different district or they didn't take the test. But as far as the rest of it, for ELA, thirty-five point two seven percent of them scored level one in seventh grade, fifteen point five two scored level two, eight point eight nine scored level three, and three point eight four were level fours. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. This is the same slide, but for math. So again, we have, oh, thank you. 873 of them did not have a math score. But 38.71% scored a level one, 12.16% scored a level two, 6.8 for level three and 4.27 for level four. So that just gives us a little bit of context on how our students were doing before they entered high school or before the lockdown happened. Next slide, please. This one's a little bit hard to see. But basically, in our office, we wanted to try to be able to predict how we thought students were going to do after quarters of high school based on certain metrics. So what we did was we built a graduation tracker. But in the graduation tracker, we break the kids up into different groups. And this is how we determine the groupings. We do have some students who graduate in less than four years. So we do have a group of cohort 2020 students who have already graduated. So in our tracker, they would be considered graduates. In order to be accelerated in our tracker, at the beginning of your 12th, your fourth year of high school, you would need to have at least 19 credits and at least six regents exams or alternative to regents exams. And then we built some metrics throughout the year. So we don't just want to look at September and forget about the rest of the year. As students are receiving grades throughout their 12th grade year, if they start getting failing scores, they fall out of that accelerated category and go into one of the warning categories. The next one down, the on-track, would be a student who starts their fourth year with at least 16.5 credits and have at least the five required regents exams you need to graduate. And then again, throughout the year, they can't start failing any of their courses. The next one is at-risk. They have less than 16.5 credits or fewer than five regents exams. So basically, they have either the exam fulfillment or the credit fulfillment, but not both. High-risk would be they don't have either. They have fewer than 16.5 credits and fewer than five regents exams. Or they start failing multiple courses throughout the school year. And then we have, or the commencement credential. We do have certain students who do not, who they're not on track to receive a regular diploma. And those kids, even if they complete and earn their credential, do not count in our graduation rate. So those students are, they're just not graduated. They don't count towards that percentage for us. And then other, other technically is students who get placed in an out-of-district placement, but they're still our student. So if they're in the detention center or FALC or a special place, you know, they could even be placed somewhere else in the state in a residential facility. They're still part of our graduation cohort, even though we're not educating them. And they follow that other category. I went last, see now that experience has not completed. They dropped out. Next slide. Okay. So we tried to come up with a way of predicting what our graduation rate might look like this year. So what we did is we took a look at last year's students at this time and what category they were in based on what I just went over. And then we figured out what percent of the students in that category graduated by June and then graduated by August. So you can see the students who are accelerated, those are the kids who had more than 19 credits or more than six or more regions. Out of that group of students, 98.27 of them graduated by June and 98.94 of them graduated by August. Of the students who were at-risk, which were the students who either didn't have enough credits or they didn't have the required regents exams yet, 85.09 of them graduated by June last year and 90.13 were graduated by August. None of our dropouts came back and graduated on time. The high-risk students, those are the students who don't have enough credits for the regents exams. Out of that group last year, 34.58 graduated by June and 46.38 graduated by August. And then of our on-track students, 92.82% graduated by June and 95.22 graduated by August. Next slide, please. So this is our current cohort, 2020. And this shows you what, what category all the students are in. So we have 2,294 students in the cohort right now. That can fluctuate and it will fluctuate until the school year ends. And as we locate kids or kids move or kids move into the district, that number does fluctuate. Not by a lot, but it does fluctuate. And of course, the kids fluctuate within the different categories. But as of Monday, we had 17 students out of that cohort who already graduated. We had 523 that were considered accelerated, 558 who are on track to graduate, 559 who are at risk, 381 who are high-risk and 256 dropouts. Next slide, please. So this is a comparison of each of those categories between this, the 2019 cohort, which is in green and the 2020 cohort, which is in blue. And really what this is showing you is the impact of exemptions and special appeals on our students. Because if you look at that accelerated bar, we had so many students accelerated last year, such a high percentage, because those students received exemptions for most of their high school career. And so that put them at six or more regents exams and put them in the accelerated category. Our 2020 students don't have that. They do have some exemptions, but not as many as 2019 had. So you can see that that's really impacted our accelerated group. And those kids that are missing from this year's accelerated group, you can see are in the on-track and at-risk bars. Next slide. So here's where we did a little math. And we used our historical percentages, which I showed you a couple of slides ago, to predict where we think we'll be in June of this year and August of this year, if the same percentages of students end up graduating out of the students sitting in each category right now. So obviously, we have 17 graduates. Those kids will be those 17 in June and in August. So that shouldn't change. For accelerated students from the 2020 cohort, there's 523 of them. So based on what happened last year, we would expect 98.27 of them to graduate, which is 514 students, by graduate by June. And then by August, we would gain a couple more. We would go up to 517. For the on-track students, we currently have 558. So based on the historical trend, in June, we would, we would expect 518 of them to graduate. By August, 531. For the at-risk students, we currently have 559. We expect 476 to graduate by June and 504 to graduate by August. For our high-risk group, we have 381. We expect 132 to graduate by June and 177 to graduate by August. So by June, we expect 1,675 of our cohort to graduate. By August, we expect 1,746 to graduate. Next slide. Which would give us, for cohort 2019, these are unofficial graduation rates. The state hasn't like officially said these are them, but I mean, these are them, these will be them. For June, we were at 75.7. And based on those projections I just showed you, this June, we would be at 73. And in August, we were at 79.1 last for cohort 2019. So our prediction for this August, based on the numbers I just showed you, would be 76.1%. So now Charlene, ASL Officer Chief, is going to come up and talk to you about some of the ongoing strategies in buildings that we were implementing to ensure that we hit that 76.1% graduation rate.
Thank you, Chief Bullock. First of all, we start with, next slide, please. We start with cohort reviews. Now, fortunately for me, when I was out, my partners went to my schools and they started the process to make sure principals have begun looking at their seniors, that course reviews were done, credit reviews were done, so that we can ensure that each student is in the correct courses that they need to meet graduation requirements in June. We also let them know in the fall if they have to take exams in January and/or June to meet graduation requirements. And that process involves the school counselor, the principal, sometimes parents, depending on what the needs of the child is. And really, it's, it's a whole-school approach because the counselors have spreadsheets that they use and they're tracking exams, they're tracking classes, they're tracking grades. So this way, we can always tell where the child is. And unlike any other cohort, this group have a lot of eyes on them. I could pick up the phone anytime and say, "Chief Bullock, can you have someone send me an email on this child at school 301?" Or I can reach out to Tina Jones to say, "I need someone to double-check this child's transcript because I don't think it's quite right or they're missing something." So they have a lot of eyes on their grades, on their test scores and even on how they're doing with their attendance. The next thing, we, January exams come into play for some who need it. That will be slide 16, those results. And students are able to have exam prep with AIS classes and after-school support. The EWI slides are 17 and 18 and you can see how we use that process. And that's another resource for our schools. Some schools have EWI persons on staff. And if not, I tell them, reach out, tell principals to reach out to Chief Bullock and she can get you any report you need. And then this district does a review all the time. I think Ebony's, Chief Bullock's department is looking at data every other day with our seniors, our juniors, our 10th graders and down to our ninth graders. So the other good piece about this is that on any given day, principals know exactly where their seniors stand. They have, for the most part, principals have a good eye on their students. They know exactly who needs what to graduate. They can tell you what the barriers are, if any exist. And they also build relationships with their students to try to motivate them to get on track and get, and come to school every day. You'll see from the attendance slide 19, a big push from the attendance department is done. I do believe Laura Samoski-Peters leads a group of attendance teachers who even make a phone call on Saturday to see where students are and to get them to come into school. Home visits are made by the attendance teachers, robocalls, go-out letters. And I think as a team, we work very well and we give our students so much support. And the fact that some of them have exam exemptions from last year or the year before, we should be doing better than we are as far as meeting that goal. But I think there are a lot of barriers that come into play for our young people. Some of them are working, some of them just don't come to school for whatever reason. And it's, it's a struggle, but everybody works at it every single day. When I go into the schools, that's the first thing I ask about, "How are our seniors doing today?" Now that report cards are out for the second market period, we'll, we'll have some more data to look at to see who needs those extra pushes, who needs to start standing after school for ELT to work with the teachers. And in some cases, some students may need to be placed in the connexus program if they're missing a credit or a course that they need to meet graduation requirement. So I think overall, we're working very efficiently to help our seniors meet that goal of graduating in June. We have parents involved, we have the school counselors involved, we have social workers involved. It's a whole-team approach to helping support our students. And when the ASLs, we all make our school visits, we also ask the principals, "What do you need to help your seniors?" And those are the types of conversations that we are having on a regular basis.
So if you go to the next slide. This is just a quick slide to show you this past January of our 2020 cohort. For each exam listed, that is the number of students who passed the exam in January. Now, that doesn't mean they needed it to graduate. Some kids may have come to just get a higher score than they had before. But these are the students who scored high enough on each of these assessments to consider, be considered a pass. So we did have, I mean, for Common Core ELA, 112 kids from that cohort came and passed it in January. So that's very exciting news. I was very encouraged when I saw some of these numbers of students coming and passing. And we had, by the way, this is just the kids who passed. We had so many cohort 2020 kids come to the, for at least one exam, which, which is great, that they're coming, they know what they need to do and they're trying to get it done. Okay, so we current, this is, I have to say, it says it on the top, but I'm going to say it again. This is sample data. This is not real data and, but it will be soon. So we do currently have an early warning indicator dashboard in our internal data dashboard for all staff to use. We redesigned it. And this is the redesigned dashboard. It has a lot of, the functionality is better, but it's not live yet. It'll be live in the next two weeks. But our supervisor, his name is Brian Whitley. He's the supervisor of early warning indicator systems, designed this and maintains it. So this gives us real-time data. Like every night, fresh data is filtered into this. And if a student starts, a teacher, they took a test today, the teacher graded it, they didn't do so hot, and it created a failing score for one of their core subjects, they'll move to a different category on here. And if somebody in the school is looking at it tomorrow, they can see that that student suddenly isn't doing so great in that class and they can immediately put an intervention in place to help that child. So this, we call it graduation gold for gold. The students who are in gold have what? Two or less warning indicators. And the students who are in the silver have three to four warning indicators. And the students who are in bronze have five or more warning indicators that need to be addressed. And the warning indicators are on the next page. So can we go to the next slide? And I only included the nine through 12 warning indicators. So these are the ones we use for high school students. But we have this system in place for pre-K to 12. So we have warning indicators for the littles that those schools can use to identify students who are at risk based on different indicators, right? Because for a first grader, the indicators look a little different than they would for a high school. So we have grade band in them. I believe it goes pre-K to three, four to six, seven, eight, and then nine to 12. But in nine to 12, we look at their, their attendance rate. So it's not just their ADA or their average daily attendance, but it's also if they, if they have too many days suspended from school. We look at the number of office discipline that a student has and their suspensions. And then we look at course performance. So we're looking for failure in the core courses. We're looking for failure in any course. So if you start failing your art class, you will get a warning indicator that will indicate to your school that somebody needs to have a talk with you about, you know, getting your grade up in art. We don't want anybody to fall through the cracks. So there's all these different ways of looking at it. We look at their IXL scores for BOY, MOY and ELY. And there's a threshold there that would be a warning indicator if they dipped below. We're looking for missing regents exams. And then we have a few other ones that are, the research tells us, are just a warning indicator, right? So if you are, let's say, you moved two or more times during the school year, research tells us that kids who move several times during a school year are less likely to complete school than kids who don't. Does that Does that mean if you move four times this year, you're not going to graduate? No, but it's something we want to put a watch on so that we know that that student might need something extra, right?
Yes. I also want to say Lauren's being very humble. She's not tuning her horn loud enough. Under her direction, Brian has worked with Student Support, and he's reaching out to CAI to do some mapping. So not only will you see the flag, you will be able to click on that flag for Ebony Bullock and, and the teacher and your school leader by, um, very Ebony Bullock-specific strategies to help me grow in that area of needs. So, yes.
Um, what is the TCQI?
TCQI is a calculation of, um, what, it's a numerical calculation of a failure in a core class. So like, we do this, uh, if you're failing one, two, three, or four core classes, and then we do like a mathematical calculation, and if you dip below a certain threshold, your TCQI would probably get a flag.
Thank you.
And so Ebony's right, we, Brian did work with several other departments, and there are, um, if, if a student does move more than twice during the school year, you can click on that indicator, and you will get a list of possible interventions that you can add who to contact. So you can call whoever in Student Support and get that intervention in place to help that child be successful, even though they may have some of these other things going on, um, in their life.
We did this work, um, knowing what we knew about Cohort 2020. We knew what we were up against, we knew what the buildings were doing, and we knew that the buildings and our colleagues in CAI were working their hardest to create interventions and enrichments in some cases to help support not just 2020, but right now specifically 2020. So we built these dashboards and these ways of working with our colleagues to create interventions and systems of support, specifically because we knew what we were up against with 2020.
Um, so this is what we spent our, our bus around, by the way, building this system so we can help students. Uh, and then the last, the next slide, slide nineteen is just a, a com, so you can see the average daily attendance for the Cohort 2020 is seventy-four point three six, and our district overall is eighty-three point two seven. And I can tell you at the monitoring this for a couple of years, every cohort, the graduating cohort, as their senior year goes on, their ADA goes down, 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 down. Um, so this is, this is actually tracking with what happened last year as well. Um, but it, it is something that we should be watching.
A lot of information.
Thank you.
Can I ask you anything?
Okay, sure. Recognize the chair, please. Cindy, then Mr. Hertz. And then Dr. Evans.
Uh, thank you for a very lengthy presentation. Um, it is my hope as we continue to move forward, we will, um, not that I don't appreciate stories, but honestly have less stories, and we'll have more kind of facts, figures, data, and that's kind of what we're looking for. So as we move through this and we talk about the goals, one of the things I want to kind of set straight right from the start is that we assume, because we say student, or we reference a goal, that we are in fact reporting out on those specifics. And while it's great to have the background information, it's very helpful as we continue to process and understand what things mean. I am looking at the goal, right, and the interim specifically that we're responding to and doing some of my own math. I was able to, I think, answer three point one to three point two, but that was kind of doing my own, and that's based on the extra information, the definitions, trying to figure it out. And I think it would be helpful moving forward to very clearly have those particular specifics answered. There can be backgrounds, there's going to be questions, there'll be dialogue. So I think for us, it may be helpful to have that. And I think the other thing that I want to just, you know, highlight is that it's a lot of information to take in, and we didn't see it ahead of time. Um, so I think for us, having some of that to let our brains digest is going to be helpful as well. And then I know three point three and three point four are supposed to be reported on by March first of 2024, which they weren't touched on today. But, um, I am hopeful that we will be able to have information at the March board meeting that's specific to the metrics, the interim goals. I, I think, again, it was a lot of information that was actually helpful for me that I did not know and did not understand. But in terms of what we are kind of transitioning ourselves to do, it's tailoring that and becoming very specific to answer these and then others.
Cindy, I think it might be helpful to, um, explain, at least give them a snapshot of what
They don't know what your three point one is and three point two is.
Well, and so there lies another concern, right? Because we established these goals, and we did that in conjunction with the superintendent. So theoretically, that information should then be available to be able to work off of. But outside of that, what I can say is that the goal that is set forth this year that was referenced, right? The reason y'all are, are doing the, the presentation, Goal Three, is the percentage of unofficial four-year graduation cohort students who complete state and district graduation requirements will remain consistent from seven point one percent in June twenty-one to seven, or seventy-nine point one, excuse me, in June twenty-one to seventy-nine point one in June twenty-one.
So it was never seventy-nine?
And then we have interim measures, right? So that's the board's big goal that we presented. And then from that, the superintendent has then developed interim goals. And there are four of them for Goal Three. Um, interim measure one is the percent of students in the Cohort 2020 with sixteen and a half credits earned, reported by November first, twenty-three. Um, and then interim two is percent of students in Cohort 2020 who have passed five regents exams, reported by November twenty-first. Me, hearing your definitions of what constitutes, right, those particular graduated accelerated on track, tells me that those students, if I add them all together, all met those two objectives, right? And so when I back into that and look at the total number of students, I get about forty-eight percent are right now, snapshot today, so I'll come back to the November info, today, hit those two milestones, right? Which is fine, like, at least we know where we're working with. Um, interim three, point three, is the percent of students in Cohort 2020 who have earned sixteen and a half credits after mid-year exam. Goal is seventy-seven percent by March first. And then interim three point four is percent of students in Cohort 2020 who have passed five regents exams. Goal is sixty-three percent. So we haven't talked about the mid-year, right, unless that's clumped in that.
That's in there.
Okay, so that is that number that is reflected, that is the current mid-year number. Okay, so I misunderstood that part. Okay, so we have hit all of them. Um, so then I guess my question is, now, it's forty-eight percent, right? Um, and I know we've created kind of some lofty goals, um, as to where we're at. Then do you, do you really think we, it is achievable to hit that seventy-six percent number? Because I know that's going to be requiring a lot of these at-risk students to be able to, to pile it up, right? The goal is, is, the goal is actually seventy-nine.
But that was the wrong year. Yeah. The seventy-nine was from August. That was what the August graduation rate was, and not the June. The June graduation rate was seventy-five point seven. So on slide fourteen, um, they went over that piece.
No, that, and that makes sense, and it's showing up on the slide. What I have, though, are agreed upon goals. So like, that's where my brain is like, so the numbers we have that we have to evaluate off of still say seventy-nine percent, right? And that's what the board voted on, that's what was agreed upon. And I'm not disputing that it's seventy-five, it absolutely likely is, right? But this again is a lesson for all of us as we're going through the process. Communication, making sure that we're shifting things, um, you know, and staying accountable.
I don't disagree. Um, you know, we had a meeting back, I believe, in maybe July, and we came up with the goals fairly quickly, you know? Um, and so when we did that, I don't even think we had, or the August rate wasn't, it was embargoed, and we couldn't even release it. So I think that's where that seventy-nine point one percent came up at. But I wanted to tonight dispel the seventy-nine point one percent because what it looks like is, and the reason we told the story is because we know that this is a cohort of young people that have experienced a lot. And it's important for the board to know and understand that they have experienced a lot on a pivot, and they don't have the benefit of the waivers that previous cohorts had. So not only did they experience a lot, but those waivers have been pulled away. And yet, what I wanted this board to know is that the due diligence of the staff, district-wide and in the schools, I hope you see that no stone is being left unturned. We're doing everything we can to work with them to get them through. So I just wanted, so that's kind of why we went through some of the background, because I wanted the board to know, you know, we're predicted to meet seventy-three percent, but we're hustling to get to that seventy-five point seven and possibly higher. We had even put in place, um, two Saturdays to have regents prep, but then we had a snowstorm. So we weren't able to do some of that. But we set monies aside to really do a boot camp and, and work with the young people to get that done. So we're looking at everything, whether it's, you know, how students move throughout the year. Um, you've heard that. We're looking at our McKinney-Bentle youth. We're looking at every single thing and doing all that we can.
And I don't dispute that by any means or doubt that, honestly. I think just for presentation purposes, to give data right away and then open it up, questions are going to come out, and you all have, right, the information. And you're able to share and push the story together. I think unfortunately, the data, the numbers get lost and all of the information, and it's a little bit difficult to process and follow to make sure that we understand how it relates to the goal as written, which is what we ultimately have to monitor, right? Um, and so the why is helpful, right, in context, especially if we have questions. But getting to the, the data, getting to the number just clearly, um, so we, we can digest it, I think is just what will be helpful. And again, I'm only speaking for me in this space, and I recognize that. But I think that's ultimately the goal of the SOFG kind of space.
And I think moving forward, we will be able to, but this is really the first presentation we've had on Goal Three. So that's why we did some of this background, so.
But the presentations for the other goals are presented the same way. There just was an opportunity to highlight it in that space. We're given a little bit more opportunity today, and that's why I took advantage of highlighting it.
First of all, the board, that we not share the, the narrative, or if you'd rather get the narrative, you know, in writing, that's, that's perfectly fine for us. Okay, Mr. Hertz, then, uh, Dr. Evans, and then Larry Scott.
Okay, I won't be long, but, um, thank you for the presentation. Wonderful presentation. These are the numbers that we can actually physically look at and see how we can, um, work towards our graduation goals, our student achievement goals, and, uh, superintendent, uh, Richard Hur calls. Um, I've looked at the numbers and some of the things what Cindy said, the seventy-three percent to seventy-five point seven and seventy-nine percent are goals that he, uh, achieved. And, but some things I, I would like to see is possibly, uh, drop out the numbers compared this year to last year and to the COVID year, and also the number of McKinney-Bentle students that we have, because we know the hardship that those families have. And, and I, and I had a couple of phone calls about some that's, that's really underperforming and just because of the situation in the region. And, um, see how those correlate to superintendent reaching the goals and, uh, those, uh, moving circumstances. We, uh, like, like, one, one red flag that I see here on page sixteen is that, is the regents exams that was taken in January, and it looks like only two hundred and sixty-eight students passed the regents exam. And that's out of two thousand, two hundred and ninety-four in the twenty-two cohort. So it, like, the number is that how many, how many students actually took the exams? And how many are on track after that should be successful to graduate.
So just, um, so this was the January exams, and we typically have less students take January exams because they, these are the students who weren't successful the first time they took the exam, or they missed the exam the first time they took the exam. So the, the January exams are really like a repeat. So, um, the numbers are always lower because the kids really, the, the big exam period is June. And then anybody who passed in June doesn't have to come back in January and do it again. So, um, this is just.
So the number from June and January?
June, August, and January.
But that'll give us a much better way to evaluate where we're at for our graduation.
I, I, I think that those numbers should, is not necessarily for the board to evaluate, but for you guys to see of the percentage of students that are taking it, how effective are you? I think that's the issue here. Uh, and so with that, um, Dr. Brown, and, uh, then, uh, Board Member Scott, and then Board Member, please.
Evelyn Brown, because there's another Dr. Brown in the house. Thank you for your presentation. I thought it was very thorough as well. And like, you know, Dr. Williams said, this is the first time that, um, we received a presentation on Goal Three, so thank you for that. Um, the beauty of student outcome-focused governance is, is what, what we're doing now. And, um, Goal Three, which is the graduation rates, is that now we can begin to monitor, you guys were monitoring along, but I think the presentation allows us and the community to see, um, the reality of where we are. Um, I like, um, the fact of early warning indicators because when you look down at first and second graders, we should be able to, um, assess your kids are, in terms of early warning indicators. So I like the fact that this goes from K through twelve, or twelve down. It's very consistent. So my question is, so when we look at this, uh, dashboard, who's able to really access it?
So any district employee can access the dashboard. The teachers have only access to the students in their classes, but all of the administrators, the principals, the assistant principals, they have full access to everybody in the district. We have district access, all of central offices district access, and, um, the coaches in the building have full access to their school.
Okay, so will they, okay, so when it goes live?
It, I should clarify, it is live.
Okay.
It just doesn't look exactly like this. We streamlined it and made this a little, it just functions better when you're clicking through. But they do have a live version that they were trained on last summer.
So all the people who have access have been trained?
Administrators.
So for me, that's a problem, only because when we talk about, when we look at the intervention, the indicators, and we want to put interventions in place to take that high-risk group, for example, to get them prepared to really graduate, I don't know, I mean, I think administrators, that's good, but I'm talking about somebody who's going to do the case management, who will put the interventions in place, et cetera. You know what I'm saying? All right, so that, that was my observation.
We will be working with the, and to see, rather way to, um, make sure that teachers get that level of training. We know that we have to prioritize it with other things that teachers, um, are learning. We are, are we not rolling it out in Data Champion?
It's getting rolled out in Data Champion.
So, so to, to clarify, it's administrators, and we have, um, every school has a person called a data champion, and that could be an administrator, it could be a teacher leader. And most teacher leaders have been given this training. There are four high schools, or three high schools that have, uh, you, early warning indicators. Four high schools have a specific, not specific, well, they are usually the data champion, but they have a specific person on staff, um, that's called an early warning indicator coordinator. And those early warning indic, uh, early warning indicator coordinators, they're not supervised by, by staff or Brian, but they do work with Brian, and he helps them understand what's in this dashboard, and they are to help with case management within the schools. So there are a few people right now, Steve, who are beginning to do this work, and we will work with Chief by telling to make sure of that.
I also just want to add one quick thing. Uh, Brian has been spending this last probably eight or nine months working with Dr. Brown's department specifically to try to track the interventions that are happening to see if they're valid, right? So we can say that the research told us that these are the interventions, but we want to see. but we want to see every time someone uses it, is it working? So he is in the process right now of building, I think it's like five or six different dashboards to help us and, and Dr. Brown's team look at this intervention being used in five schools. And then we're seeing movement in this warning indicator in those schools. And then we can go to other schools and say, we can have a lot of success with this indicator when you see this warning indicator, or with this intervention, with this indicator. And so we are currently researching that so that we can be a little more targeted in what we, at what the dashboard advises people to use as their interventions.
I think that's fantastic. So kudos to you. And I always bring this up because my youngest son graduated performing arts. And, you know, he really had an issue with the, one of the Regis courses, I think it was slow ball. Maybe two, math also. And, but the gist of the story goes, I'm trying to figure out why he couldn't pass, and what is, you know, the district doing, right? So Jolie Covington, who's still the principal there, I said to her, this kid can't pass. What can we do? And so they put some interventions in place, including one of the English teachers who said, this one's going to pass, you know, she, she said, she, and she worked with these kids consistently. And he passed, but it was a concern, you know?
And that's the kind of manager shit, okay?
When I saw this, but thank you.
This is Scott.
Thank you, President Ben Cotton. So I absolutely understand us needing to be focused in targeting student outcomes. But I think I get a little bit, I'm starting to get a little bit uneasy with us not validating the story. I mean, we have to be honest, COVID was a, a world event that was absolutely unique. The exemptions, when we established these graduation goals, I didn't even realize these exemptions expired at that time. I, I did not know that. I just assumed they were there and they're staying there. I didn't realize they expired. You didn't even mention, too, the racial violence and racial justice issues that happened with George Floyd, May 2020. The May fourteenth shooting in Buffalo, what, what year was that? All of this has impact on our students, on our families, on our staff. So I, I have to, like, lift up that there is a story. And I'm a school psychologist, and if I evaluate a student, I don't just focus on the test results. There's got to be pregnancy, birth, developmental milestones, social emotional needs, health and medical, et cetera. And so all of that has to be part of the story. And I just, we, we have to find a balance. We need to have goals, and we need to be focused on student outcomes. But we can't lose the story. We can't lose the holistic approach to our students, to our families, and to our community at large. So that's just where I stand on that.
Thank you.
So I, whether likely or not, I feel like because it is the first presentation, because there's a story attached, and all these about time stories. My only piece that, great if anything, would be if we did receive it sooner with that kind of caveat that we're going to maybe get into the story, that would help us out a lot. And a few of my questions and concerns have been dealt with. But I do want to ask, I understand really certain people have access to the data. But some of these early warning indicators, I quite share, a lot of the public doesn't realize these exist. And that people don't realize that we are monitoring from pre-K on up. So even if your data champions, or whoever it is that you have on staff, anyone meets with the parent liaison so that there's some kind of bulleted explanation for our parents that we are following up with our students. And I think that student outcomes, this is a good way for us to really, we're going to say it a lot. And I totally understand where you're coming from, like, we are focusing on it, but there is, there is a balance. And for us to not have to only present at board meetings, like, it can be a consistent piece of data. I'm not saying all the figures and the names and all of that needs to be there, but just something along the lines of letting parents know that we are doing these. Here is what were the categories, here are the indicators that we're looking at. If they have any questions, parent liaisons and those data champions can be those bridges in order to make those, you know, questions available. So that's my only suggestion. But other than that, I appreciate, yes, it was, it was lengthy. And it was a lot of data to take in all at one time, and I have more notes than my hand wanted to write. But I did get the story, and I think it was relevant in a, in a superior way to highlight that cohort that went through that. And I also have a student who went through that on a high school level, and it was something else, so. Thank you.
I do want to say that we are working with Dr. Ramon's, Dr. Redmond's team. And we are, actually, we've done several presentations so far with the pills, and this is one of them. It's coming. So it is on our books to, to meet with the pills. And we are more than willing to help to DPCC or any of the other parent stakeholder groups. It seems to be that our spring is full of meeting with parents to help them understand graduation, EFRY, testing, everything that OSAT touches. I've been pushing my staff out there to get to parents and start that work at the gra, at the graduates level, so.
I just encourage us to utilize the folks, it can't be the five of you all the time, right? You do have folks in place, you do have parent liaisons and the leads of all these organizations who also have people in place to make sure that this information gets out. So I would, I've, I would actually, like, feel bad if you feel like you have to go to every meeting. We do have people in place, and that's another investigation we really need to do. These community meetings are going to highlight all the people that we engage with regularly, and maybe we can start bridging some of these gaps. But to have you overextend yourselves of something that can easily, like you said, just be put in bulletproof form for any organization to pick up, it could be on the website, that's a lot of stress off of you, you know, and we need you to do this. So I, I appreciate that.
Thank you for the report. I just have a couple of questions. Are the parents involved in this process? When you identify a child that is behind, is there something that the system generates for to send the parent, to let the parent know that your child is?
So we have, so along with this dashboard, this new one that's coming out, we designed a parent-friendly report that shows where the warning indicators for your child are. And it is, we actually work very closely with Syracuse. They wanted, they wanted to work, talk about this, and we wanted to talk about their parent-friendly report, and we kind of shared ideas. But it is going to be in, in Infinite Campus. If you sign up for the parent portal, you have a backpack in there that we can just automatically put your child's form in every, whatever time period we decide. I mean, right now, we're going to aim for every five weeks. But we can make that time period shorter once we get the ball rolling. But parents will have access to that in their backpack. And we have been, on all of our social media, we've been tweeting out and, and posting on Facebook ways to get your parent portal set up. And once that goes in the backpack, we will have instructions on how to access your backpack and get your child's report.
This is my impression. There has been one report. Dr. Williams asked that, the last report we put in the backpack, and it is in the backpack.
And at the school level, President Cotton, after the first marking period, our non-criteria school sent out letters to parents, and we put in red at the top, your child is in danger of not graduating in June.
All right.
Explain why, and phone number to call and make an appointment, or have a phone conference with the school counselor or the principal. So schools are constantly notifying parents so that they're aware what's going on with your child academically.
Okay, so that's great. So I, I, I'm just trying to envision how this all works out. So in a school, let me just give an example. You've got fifty, or seventy-five, let's say a hundred, hundred of these indicators. Is anybody monitoring when they go down per month or per week or whatever? So you did say that, but I'm talking about, is a report generated so that the principal knows upfront, or the staff knows upfront, what they have to do? In other words, you understand what I'm saying? So that I don't have to go through every child's file. I need to know that there are twenty cases that I need to look at today.
So it's not a paper report because we're trying, you know, the minute you print this out, it's old.
Right, I get it.
So they, they have this, and I know that the associates and the representatives from our office go out and work with the schools to look at this. And we do have a lot of principals and assistant principals who look at this daily. And all of these things are clickable. So like, say I wanted to see who my kids were that had, like, five warning indicators. I can click that, and it will give me a list of all of them, what their warning indicators are. And then I can start grouping them by indicator and then start putting interventions in.
Okay, so would that also include the social workers involved or anything? Everyone, the SST team is involved in that?
Yeah, so Brian's working with, he's been working with the SST teams, the social workers, the psychologists, the guidance counselors on that whole piece where they are, they, they have access to this. They know how to use it, and they're logging whatever interventions they're putting in place. Right now, they're just logging it on spreadsheets. So we're building up a place where they can put the interventions in, and it would feed into a dashboard that shows them what interventions are being used and are they working.
Okay, I thank you for the information because I had forgotten who these children were until you reframed it today. I really had. And as sitting on the board during that time, I know how difficult it was to get children engaged in that process. It was, it was rough. It was rough. I became at home now, who had a grant, who had a pre-K at home with me, or kindergarten home with me, every day doing.
Some of us have kids.
Yeah, yeah, so I understand. So thank you for sharing this. I had forgotten who these children were. I really think with that said, that I think that at graduation, we should think about superintendent putting together a special, some sort of certificate or award for each one of these children that make it through this, because this was a rough time. First of all, this was a very rough time.
Wouldn't it vary real content if you have a board member? It's cohort 2020. She's sitting at your table. So repeat one.
That's right. Well, we need to give you a hand.
We need to see our board member, who comes here every Wednesday, that she's asked to be here. But that's the face of cohort 2020.
So, you know, I have to just echo what Board Member Scott said. And even as a principal, the numbers, the data is the data for sure. But I always had a little picture next to, you know, all of my bubble kids because I didn't want my staff to get so myopic in just the data, but to know that all of that data have faces, and there is a narrative on how they got, as you heard Jessica Walker say tonight, you know, there's a root causes. It doesn't just happen that you end up as a dropout. That starts probably in first or second grade. And we've got to better understand that to interrupt that kind of cycle, so. I just don't know where the children have gone. It's across the country. It's across the country. It's everybody at every school, just talking about the children and the behaviors. And so we're not, and we're not in a category of alone. But I want to thank you for this. I think in moving forward, as this board progresses with the development that they're doing, and they have the substance behind it, I think substance is important. I used to have at one time eighteen people who reported to me. And I found out when I gave them the basic understanding of what they were, why they were doing something, they worked harder and they did it in a more proficient way. And I, I, this was deep because, for real, I just want to hug you even more because I know how hard it was for kids doing that. I really do. It was really rough. It was really rough. Anyhow, wait, so I just, my final question is, why can't we find the children? Why can't we find them? There's Facebook, there's Twitter. Why can't we find these kids?
So we, I can speak from what, when we just had a Saturday session where I worked with five to ten of these teachers, and we were calling every month. We get a fresh report of kids who've stopped coming to school that we get time. And we get lots of wrong numbers, lots of people who say this is no longer so-and-so's number. Keep calling me, this is not their number. The other thing that happens a lot is, parents will say to us, oh, so-and-so's in school in Georgia. But we can never confirm that that's where they are. And until we can confirm it per the state regulations.
Well, that's what my fear is, because I looked at how many dropouts are in this, in this cohort. And this is serious. I mean, I don't know, I mean, really, you're lucky to have the numbers you have when I looked at, right, this is almost a wash with the group.
The one piece of good news that the state has finally done, which I've been wanting for years, but they finally did, is every student has their Buffalo ID, but they also receive a state ID. So every student in the state of New York has a unique number assigned to them. And all of us have to upload our data. So every week, I upload our enrollment data to the state. And now they produce a report every week that will show us if somebody that we're claiming is enrolled in our district, their number popped up in a different district within the state.
Oh, that's cool.
And this is new this year. So our attendance teachers are checking it daily, my, our office is checking it daily. Other districts are calling us and saying, and we're going back years. They're saying, I get, I found kids that have been in another district for like eight, nine years. So this is helping us tremendously. It would be lovely if the entire country would assign a student number, and we can do this with the country, but at least we have a small step. But if they went somewhere else in New York State, we can find them.
So what if we have a conversation with the Council of Great City Schools about utilizing them to maybe do some work with the other states? Because that'll automatically bring up our graduation numbers if we can do that. So I think it's worth having a conversation with Ray Hart about that. I think that's a suggestion. I think that's an important thing, that we might be able to do that. Thank you for sharing that. Thank you. I think how these children work, I'm telling you, that matters. If I started thinking about it, it'll bring tears to my eyes and let me know.
Don't want to relive it.
Don't want to relive it at all. Yeah, it was rough. One in a lifetime. Okay, now, can I move to the consent agenda? Okay, may I have a motion to accept our consent agenda?
Sure.
So we didn't.
The beginning.
Well, we did it out of, we did it out of, I'm doing it now, okay? Barry in second, okay? All right, the consent agenda, we only have, I think, two items on here. Mr. Hurd, item number twenty-eight and twenty-B.
Yes, I read the email, and it's an estimation of all work that needs to be done at that facility, at building number eight. My question is, does this conclude the work at that facility?
Yes, well, we are handing off now, and anything else that needs to be done will be done by our trades or by a separate RFP processing contract. So all of the work that is under the emergency authorization.
Okay, and are you trade working for another separate division?
There's still work to be done, but it's being done by our trades. So more examples, the boiler rooms were not fired up until October because of the whole process, we needed to get boiler plates, so those were fired up. We found steam leaks when that was done. Our steam fitters are fixing that. It's, it's now outside of the scope of work, so we are, we have transitioned to our trades. And if anything comes up, this is to be for that. We will, we will go through the whole process of addressing the building issue of identifying it and doing an RFP.
Did you need to have a hell of a, hold it up, or we have to do this? Or, or I think, work or materials?
Some of the A and E extensions that you saw were because you had to give state ed some more information for the full permitting process. That's complete. We are paying for this.
Okay, what's your final grade conclusion, my last question?
So we are, we are working, we, we have a couple of things we're working on and we're looking at another month.
Okay, great.
So let's just make sure moving forward that anything that comes over to this board for more than what the superintendent can approve, which I think is twenty thousand, that we have something attached to it. I think that's important in the event we're ever audited as well, that the board did just not blanketly approve, that's a concern or not. But I also feel that we're missing an opportunity in these large contracts to get some, something in return, you know, to do eleven. to get some, something in return, you know, to do $11 million with a vendor and then to receive a request for 300,000, to me is like a slap in the face because if we had a benefits agreement or something, we, automatically we would have received a certain percentage. And if we had to, I just don't feel that it's fair to be paying all these corporations handsomely and not receiving anything back in return. We are a poor school district, most of that could be written off through their taxes, and there's just no reason why these people are making all this money and we're not getting something in return. You know, we have to shift the way we look at things, this is being done. I heard you speak before about a company that did a lot of business that, in Pennsylvania, is offering all sorts of stuff, but in Buffalo, the hometown, we didn't get anything. So we have to start looking at that and start requiring it, okay? And we have not because you ask not, and we have to start asking, and I'm really serious about that. So thank you for that, but that's the type of things that I'm looking for to try to help us with some of the deficit that we have. We just saw a presentation, and my fear is that everything that we just saw could be wiped away because we don't have benefits agreement or people that are willing to give us assistance in things to adopt us. Adopt us for a program or something, do something to at least say that we're not, you're just not taking from the poor kids in Buffalo Public School District. So that's what, that's where, you know, that's the type of moving forward I'd like for us to start seeing. Don't come here unless you're willing to give us something in return. You know, let's start asking for it, and I'm sure we can get it if we ask, so thank you for that. No other questions on the, thank you, Mr. Hill. No other questions or concerns? So we are going to vote just on the consent agenda, not the, excluding the resolutions, which we will do it separately. Are you ready to poll the board?
Yes, I'm on the consent agenda, how do you vote, Board Member Evans Brown?
No exceptions.
Board Member Hurd?
I'm going to recruit myself from 13A.
Reason for what?
Affiliation.
And other than that?
Um, no exceptions.
Board Member McCacken?
No exceptions.
Board Member McCosey?
No exceptions.
Board Member Scott?
No, excuse me, no exceptions.
Board Member Woods?
No exceptions.
And Board President Felton Hatton?
No exceptions.
Thank you, the consent agenda passes.
Thank you. All right, moving forward, we have the resolution that we have to take a look at. Board Number McCousey, it has been brought to my attention that, or, uh, uh, excuse me, before I do the resolutions, I want to do the redistricting committee nominees, nominees. Item 26A, that there is an amendment to your, to the name that you have listed. Can you provide that for us, please, the name that you'd like to put on here?
Yes, and I don't want to get it wrong, so excuse me, well, I find it. The name is Luis Rodriguez, L-U-I-S Rodriguez. And I am, I did have the conversation with Mr. Fisher.
Okay.
Around, you know, not so-called removing him. It was his suggestion as once all the names became clear and with community input, that we needed some more influence from other cultures in this districting committee. So Mr. Fisher was gracious enough to relinquish his seat and suggested Mr. Rodriguez, as well as other people have suggested him, so speaking with him, he will now be the representative. And the beauty of this is that Mr. Fisher, Mr. Rodriguez both worked on the redistricting committee for the actual city and the council as a team, so we got a two for with this one.
Okay, good, thank you. So may I have a motion to accept the redistricting committee nominees that have been amended and presented to the board? Board Member Woods, second by Board Member Evans Brown, she was second. We've already had our discussion, unless there's more to be had. Moving forward, may all in favor, any opposed?
Not opposed, I just want.
You have one thing, okay, back.
Just in the future, I would like us to adopt a policy regarding this, so it's a smoother process, that's all.
Okay, this, this happens every 10 years, so whatever ideas you have in regards to adopting a policy, please direct it to our legal so that she can do it, okay? It's all mine sphere, can we take the vote again, all in favor?
Right.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Resolution for charter school renewal, Enterprise Charter School, and resolution for charter school renewal, Westminster Community Charter School. I put them lumped in together, but if you want to break them separately, we can. Any reason for the board at this point that we can't do it that way? Vote in both, vote at the same time, or you want an individual to vote?
You might want to individually vote it, just for clarification.
Okay, so, trying to escape a bullet here. So in regards to the resolution for the charter school renewal for Enterprise Charter School, may I have a motion?
Moved.
Mr. Scott, second by Jennifer.
McCousey.
All in, wait a minute.
I see McCousey.
Oh, McCousey, I'm sorry.
Oh, wait, this is Enterprise?
Yeah, this is Enterprise.
Do we need to?
Yeah, I'm getting ready to open up the floor.
Make it known that we amended this resolution?
Yes.
Okay, open up the floor for discussion. In regards to this, do you have anything you'd like to share with the board, Council?
The resolution had been amended, so it's going to be amended.
As amended, okay. Is there any discussion in regards to this particular charter school that we need to talk about at this point?
Which one you going with first?
Well, Enterprise.
Enterprise, okay.
Our waiver? About to wave the term waiver.
Right, but it, it, this automatic is the vote. If we get a two-third, two-third, if we get a three-third vote, it's automatically done.
But we don't have to actually waive it separately?
I just asked it. No, I asked her that before we did it. Okay, are you all right? Okay, so the question was, this was.
Do you want to read the rest, the amendment into the record?
Right.
Is that what?
Would you like to?
Yes.
So, the discussion that the board just had is that these two resolutions were brought before the board outside of the timeline, whereas we vote, in order to move forward, there has to be two-thirds of a vote on this, these two resolutions in order for them to pass. And, okay, so I just was clearing that up for the people who are listening, thank you.
And the amendment that we've made to the resolution that was posted is to the first resolve, and it now reads, based solely upon Enterprise's meeting the conditions set forth in the settlement agreement, the Board of Education recommends a renewal for Enterprise Charter School for a period of five years, expiring June 30th, 2029.
Okay, and so, in layman's language, Mr. Scott, do you want to break that down? Or do you want me to break it down?
I, I'm not comfortable breaking it down.
Okay, so basically what this is saying is that the board had an agreement that was crafted some years ago. And in the agreement, it basically says that if Enterprise and Westminster, both of them possibly, meet certain standards, that we would agree to submit an agreement with them that they, that the conditions, and that we would do a five-year renewal. This particular, and the reason that the amendment was put in was so that the board could be clear with the statement of where they stand. We are required by a contract or legal agreement.
To recommend.
To recommend, and so that's what we're doing here. And, and the wording needed to be changed to reflect that, okay? And so that's what we did today with the Enterprise. If there's no more discussion, may I have a vote? I think we should do an individual vote for this one, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Got to do.
The resolution for the charter school renewal for Enterprise Charter School, how do you vote, Board Member Evans Brown?
Yes.
Board Member Hurd?
Yes.
Board Member McCacken?
Yes.
Board Member McCosey?
Yes.
Board Member Scott?
Yes.
Board Member Woods?
Yes.
Board President Felton Hatton?
Yes.
Thank you. Next resolution, it was for Westminster, may I have a motion to accept Westminster? I saw two hands go up, Board Member Cindy, Board Member Jennifer. All in favor? All right, all right, moving forward, any discussion on Westminster? No, with that said, can you poll the board?
Certainly, on the resolution for the charter school renewal for Westminster Charter School, how do you vote, Board Member Evans Brown?
Yes.
Board Member Hurd?
Yes.
Board Member McCacken?
Yes.
Board Member McCosey?
Yes.
Board Member Scott?
Yes.
Board Member Woods?
Yes.
And Board President Felton Hatton?
Okay, thank you. May I have a more?
Your vote?
Oh, my vote, yes.
Thank you, it's time to see the end recently.
Okay, with that said, may I have a motion to excuse our two board members that are presently not here?
So moved.
The board members are Terrence, Terry Shuta, as well as Dr. Anne Revere. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Oh, let's see. Okay, board members, we're sort of over in time. I am comfortable, superintendent, seems like somewhere in the mix. I think we've already done it. Okay. Okay, resolution number 13A.
I think that was in the consent.
It was part of the consent, okay, thank you, so we got that clear. All right, moving forward, does anyone have anything to share? Time is of the essence, it's nine o'clock at this point. Is there any unfinished business that needs to be brought? Yes, Mr. Hurd?
Uh, just want to just say that you received a lot of phone calls from Riverside High School about security here and issues. They visit Riverside High School, and they have precipitated for the team to go there today and meet with the principal. So I'm happy to see, and that might be able to resolve some of the issues that's going on there. Our, our young ladies are highly impacted, and conduct is one of the best that's now can do it to Dakota Panda, and we could get some services over there or try to find ways that we could help that, that school. And the last thing, I know Jennifer went away on that, the second one, okay? Last thing was that we, together as a board, you know, we're working together and working hard to, you know, to bring some services here to the district, so I just like to say I just committed this board for, you know, wherever you go, we need that we continue to work together and help this district and help our children, you know, with this achievement and goals, so thank you.
So, one thing I want to add is, I know there's a tendency for when we have students that maybe, you know, I guess out of pocket, if I would say it, for them to immediately be pushed into 131. And that's, that seems to be, you know, from what I'm hearing in the community and amongst staff and folks, that that's a tendency, and that also is a safety issue. So I'm, I'm hoping that, you know, and when we go to each other's schools, you know, let, let the board members know so that we can be a part of the conversation. But, yeah, I, I feel like that's something that needed to be brought up because it has been hitting me, but I haven't had the opportunity. So I just wanted to make sure that we're really cognizant of the fact that we understand the, the structure of 131, but at the same time, how do we not create, you know, circumstance?
I've got one more thing to add. I went, I went to a couple of schools and we seen that some complaints by, by some teachers that the first period class has been an issue that children get in the school prior to the new busing program. And I'm sure some have different reasons why they're not getting to school on time for that first period class. Some are busing issues, some are, they put their children on, they're, I'm sorry, they're, probably the system room buses.
At the high school level?
At the high school level, but it's a huge concern by teachers about what's happening in that first period. So I don't know, you can, you know, take a dive into that or a survey to see what's going on with the first period, and it changes in the first period because it will affect our student outcomes and grades.
Okay. Board Member McCacken, you had shared some time back when you went to a convention about a form.
Yes.
Did you find any more about that form that board members can use?
I don't have anything else on it, but I can.
I think that that's a good idea, so that we, board members that we, that a form is created that can be sent, completed and sent to the superintendent about things that board members are encountering, and that she can follow back up with us on that form. And that way, we don't have to wait until a board meeting to, that superintendent knows what's going on within the district. Is that a good idea?
Yes.
All right, thank you for that. Okay, so we're about to wrap it up, we have to do our bereavements, and.
Aren't you, aren't you going to mention something about just?
Just to say, I have an update about just the conference briefly.
Oh, I'm sorry, sure, over here. I'm sorry, I didn't know, committee reports, then.
Yeah, no, just so that we have on record, because we're going to, about to be going and connecting with, with community. So the implementation committee is still, well, let me start out with student outcomes don't change till adult behavior change, and boy, oh, boy, we've seen a lot of behaviors today. So, we have several members who went to the Student Outcome Focus Governance Cohort Orientation Conference this past weekend in Louisville, Kentucky. Those were Board Member McCosey, Kathy Evans Brown, and Palet Woods, along with myself. And we spent a whole lot of time talking about mindset, and sitting in discomfort and spaces that make us uncomfortable as we move through this, as well as talking about the framework, and again, digging deeper into the process that we are going through. One of the biggest takeaways that I think was reported from all of us is the notion of integrity, which is doing what I have allowed people to expect to the degree I have allowed them to expect, by when I have allowed them to expect. That's the definition of integrity, and in everything, and I want to highlight how this connects to the framework and conversations that we've had tonight, especially when we're talking about this notion of story. Stories are incredibly important. They give you context as to what's going on. But we also have to remember, and I had to remind myself of this as I was called to task, sitting in a small circle and having to check my own integrity, right? Because I, regardless of excuse or reason or story, have to admit that I didn't meet the expectation that I set. And that's a hard place to sit, regardless of what's going on and how we justify what's happening, is that there is this notion, and I think for all of us, the four of us here, I'm pretty confident in saying that was in our faces quite a bit over that weekend. And that non-integrity plus an excuse does not allow access to goals. And that's just something to resonate to have set, and that we can repeat as we go forward, regardless of whether or not they're valid, right? It still sits. And so we had a lot of time to talk about the focus on ourselves and our own behavior, and how it helps or hinders student outcomes at the end of the day, and that's the reality of it. We talked about inputs, outputs, outcomes, goals, monitoring, time use evaluations, which I think several of us were sitting here doing tonight as we were going through. But we also are about to embark on the next part of our implementation journey. And so we've had conversations and work sessions about our community listening sessions. Our list is finalized-ish. We've got it done into groups, and folks have been asked, if you haven't gone in, to check your email, please do so. There's an email from Leslie right now that asks you to go into the sheet and sign up for what groups you would like to be part of. And there are, there are certainly still spaces, but we will be moving into that, that space of getting trained on, on our script and prepared to go in and enter these different forums and listen. And we'll be collecting that information. The superintendent and her team has been amazing at putting together some forums for us to utilize, to be able to go in and just give some context right at the onset, and that's very much appreciated. But next steps, we are moving aggressively into them to meet our timeline and our objectives that we have agreed to move within, and that is, hopefully, can be started soon. So, again, those of you that. So, again, those of you that haven't gone into that forum, please do so, and you sign up, and hopefully we'll be moving into this in the very near future.
She also provided a list of dates for, for you to sign up. I'm sorry.
For the script?
Uh, yeah, for the, uh, for, for learning, the script and things like that. That was out today as well. And um, so, you know, sign up as early as possible. The sooner we can get this done, the easier it'll be on everyone. And it's exciting, you know, it's a lot of work to be done still, but it's still exciting. I'm just encouraged, you know, kudos to uh, Dr. Evans Brown, uh, Board Member Jennifer McCousie, uh, Board Member McKenna, and Board Member Woods for uh, taking the time out of their life to make a commitment to learn how to be better at being a board member and to understand the bigger picture. And you can already start seeing your mind, just in talking to uh, Dr. Evans, uh, Kathy Evans Brown yesterday. She was talking about already she's seeing the, the, you know, the transformation in her mind. It's a course I took for nine months, and every time I look at A.J.'s book, I, I still pick up something new, you know? And so, um, it's, it's a big process, but I think the biggest thing that I, 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 uh, my, I'll self-reflect on is behavior that has interfered with children getting what they need, you know? And trying to appease people. As president, sometimes, you know, people want you to appease them. But I, I've been in a role where I've been not a leader, sitting on the board, and I've been in the role of being a leader. And I was just as good of a non-leader because I, I was, you know, honest with my president. I, I, Lou Petrucci will never tell you that I did not talk with him or kept him on top of what I was doing because out of respect of the position, okay? And so, that's the behavior that interferes with children getting to the next level by not doing things like that, and that's what it's about. So, I encourage board members to read that part of that book again, and let's start, start uh, working forward because everybody has ideas, okay? But getting them to the next level is what has to happen. And it cannot happen without this board, and it cannot happen with an agreement from the superintendent. And the superintendent has to ask the question, is the board aware of what you're doing? Okay, and so, I always, do I not inform you of everything that I'm trying to do as I start moving stuff? And as soon as I get it where, where you can address it, do I not turn it over to you? Has that been my consistent pro- process? So, I, I, I just try to make sure that I respect her position and not try to uh, overstep it.
Because I am the genesis of transformation.
Say that again.
I am the genesis of transformation.
And, and student outcomes don't...
Don't change until adult behavior change.
So, anyway.
It comes to what children know to do and can learn and are able to do and accomplish. It's all about the children.
This is awesome. This is awesome what's happening at this board. Do we have a person in the state to do anything like this? Probably in this whole region, quite, as we kept this up. And it is, it's starting to click in, it really is, but it's important that we stay grounded. And you have...
Yeah, they're trying to come. They're trying to come.
They're trying to come. So, Cindy and I are right, so don't get it twisted, you know, but, but note that it's not easy sharing this information. It's not. We're going to go through growing pains and then we'll...
Yes, thank you.
Hopefully you'll be around in, in, in the three, four, five years down the road to be like sitting on top of it.
Meet the rewards.
Meet the rewards or whatever. So, with that said, um, our uh, Vice President, Dr. Kathy Evans Brown, will uh, offer our bereavements today and then we will come forward for some...
Okay, let us stand. Okay, bereavements, February fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. January sixteenth, Diane Brown, custodian at Bennett Park Montessori, number thirty-two for many years, and also classroom grandma, volunteer at number thirty-two and various other BPS uh, schools. January twenty-third, Pamela Ann McLeado, retired business teacher. January twenty-fifth, Mary Ann Madden, retired account clerk for the Buffalo Public Schools. January twenty-eighth, Michael Schuda, retired chief engineer custodian with the Buffalo Public Schools, beloved husband of retired principal and Park District, District Board Member Teresa Schu- Schuda, and father of Katie Schuda, principal of the New Buffalo School of Culinary Arts and Hospitality Management. January twenty-eighth, Betty Jean Evans, retired teacher and director of Early Childhood Development Program, a volunteer with the Buffalo Public Schools during retirement. February first, Ronald Hicks, father of Ronald Hicks, a teacher aide at City Honors, brother of Brenda Hicks Russell, retired social studies teacher, Uncle uh, Danielle Russell, associate account clerk in the Athletics Department. February seventh, Mitchell Reese, beloved cousin of Tammy Holly McGee, veteran of the USA Marine Corps. February eleventh, Joseph Marcy, Marciniac, beloved retired teacher at school number three oh five. And today, February fourteenth, uh, a senseless act of violence occurred in Kansas City at the end of the uh, Chiefs uh, Super Bowl rally. One dead, approximately more than twenty-two injured and several children. So, let's keep all of these individuals in prayer and bow our heads in silence briefly. Amen.
Now, may I have a motion to conclude this meeting? I saw Cindy and Jennifer hands up. Who else wants to say?
Nobody.
And nobody.